It is 5 o'clock and I will call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the invocation delivered by Reverend Anna Jones from First Baptist Church here on Clinton Street in Fall, Kentucky. Reverend Jones?
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, Father, we, your believers, Father, we gather here this afternoon, Father, in your most holy and gracious name. Father God, we thank you, Father God, for your protection upon us on this day, Father. Father God, as we gather here today, Father God, to celebrate, Father God, and, Father God, to make rules and regulations, Father God, for our city, Father. Lord, I ask that you would be with the people, Father God, that would make the decision, Father. Father God, that they would seek you, Father God, before, Father God, they finalize any decision, Father God, pertaining to your people, Father. Lord, let your blessing, Father God, and your stamp of approval be on this meeting, Father. Let everything be done in decency and order, Lord. Father, and I ask this prayer in your Son Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance by mayor pro temp for Robert Haines.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic in which stands one nation under your eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Clerk, please call.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Haines.
Here.
Mr. Bowers.
Here.
Mr. Hayden.
Here.
Mayor May.
Here, we do have a quorum and I'll get to my agenda. Got a lot of stuff in the book. I would like to introduce our state representative, the Honorable Derek Graham, who also served on City Commission as mayor pro temp for many terms. Very happy to have you with us, always good to see you and we appreciate the great work you're doing in the General Assembly for us. And I'm not sure, I'm just looking around to make sure I don't miss-
Yeah.
I'm talking, I'm just talking to make sure I don't miss somebody's what I'm saying. I'll make sure that you get to hear everything that we say, ma'am, or whoever. But I don't know if I've missed any special guest or not. Of course, you're all special guests. We do have some ceremonial items tonight and before we do that, we'll approve the minutes and, but I was going to say, under the ceremonial items, we have a lot of folks here to be with their loved ones and coworkers and supporters over the years who are getting promoted to various positions in the city, some are retiring. But before we do that, we'll go ahead and ask for a motion on the minutes.
Mayor, I had a couple of slight corrections on minutes before we do a motion, if that's okay?
Sure.
Or do you want to have an amendment? Should I go on and say what I think was-
I would do the amendment first.
I need for, on the minutes of June-
If there's going to be amendments.
June 24th. June 24th, it was moved by Commissioner Bowers, goes on and on and on, one, four down, it says, "Session to dispense with and approved as presented." My motion was only to approve as presented, I didn't mention dispensed with. So can we just strike the word "dispensed with"? Does anybody have a problem with that?
I don't have a problem, does anyone else have a problem? Want to discuss it?
Then on the minutes of July 8th, it's just a technical thing, but what I had asked on the second page under "Old Business," Commissioner Bowers requested that the public be notified via the webpage, I would like that in there, of precautions to take. And this is just another technicality, people may not want it in here, but on the first page of July 8th minutes, John Sauer presented his opposition. I would like it to read in the form of unintended consequences because that was the message of his, his whole message was there were unintended consequences, so I would like that to be a part of it if nobody has a problem with that.
Any objections?
Not that it's very important, but that, under "Old Business," Mr. Bowers, that last sentence, doesn't that hit what you were wanting to about the web thing?
The webpage, where are you?
Says information for citizens regarding-
Okay, that's fine. So can we do the other two?
Is there any objection? If no objection, it's ordered.
And then a move that we approved amendments as amended.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Bowers, second by Commissioner Haines, is there any discussion?
Well, the minutes of June 24th and July 8th.
See no discussion, clerk, please hold up.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Mr. Haines.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, minutes are approved. And at this time, we are going to do, I guess we'll do the, I don't know if we should do retirements first or promotions first, but I guess we need, technically, when we vote on these later, we're not going to vote on these now, we'll do retirements first so that way there opens up a slot for promotions. But the first retirement is going to be Wallace Posich, who is our fire chief, and he is retiring after 15 years and five months of service. I'm not sure which order these plaques are in, I think they're in order, the way they're listed, so I'm going to come forward and present this to the fire chief. It's always interesting when a department head retires because we're losing a lot of knowledge and a lot of continuity with our department. We've had a long history of great fire chiefs and Frankfurt Fire Chief Wallace Posich has served with distinction and honor and I am very proud to have been mayor when Chief Posich was selected. Sorry to lose him, but I know that it's time for you to move on to other things and we certainly wish you well in your new endeavors and hope you'll have some time to spend traveling or doing what you like best, whatever you choose to do. And we thank your wife and your family for sharing you with the fire service for so many years and what a great way to cap off a great career as fire chief and we want to present a small token, we have some other things, of course, later we'll do proclamations at another time. We would like to present this to you and thank you so much for the service. You can say something if you want to, since-
Well, wasn't really prepared to make any kind of speech. It's been, it's been interesting, exciting, learned a lot here with the city of Frankfurt in the past 15 years. I was just thinking on my way across the street, over across the street, Mr. Zizov is the fifth city manager I've worked on. Randy Donahue is the fifth HR director I've worked with, so I don't know whether I keep running them off or what, but it's been a pleasure and like I said, I've learned a lot, we've accomplished a lot, I'm proud of what we've done for the city and for the fire department over 15 years. We've grown exponentially, we've doubled the size of the ambulance fleet, we've increased our personnel by about 24 people. EMS runs were about 4,000 a year when I came here and now they're pushing 8,000 a year, so we've continued to get busier and busier. All I can say is I'm going to miss everybody. I'm not sure I'm going to miss the long commission meetings, but I appreciate all the support that I've had from staff, all the fellow department heads, all the various commissions I've worked with, commissioners, and the mayor, and as the mayor said, he was on the board as the mayor when I was hired and it's kind of fitting that he saw me come in and he seen me go out. Thank you, Mayor.
This is going to take a while since we have so many, but next one is Mark Wood, who is retiring as fire captain, he has 20 years and four months service. And Mark has been a tremendous asset to us and we're going to miss Mark, he's been great to work with. Is Mark here? You're walking towards me, so I'm, thank you, Mark.
I gladly accept that on behalf of Mark, he happens to be in Florida, so he decided to take the last minute vacation to retire.
Well, that's okay, but again, Mark has been a tremendous asset to us, so again, we're going to lose a lot of knowledge and a great fire captain with Mark, so I'll present this on his behalf to you.
He's supposed to be here, but I'm not sure if he is.
Okay.
Is he in the hall?
We'll come back to it if he's not, that's okay. We'll skip down to, looks like we're going to get into police officers now. Mr. Chief, look, come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, if you'd allow me, I'll say a few words on each of these individuals before we pass out their plaques. First is Officer William Bell. Officer Bell, Bell. First of all, Officer Bell has been with us for 16 years. His previous hazardous duty experience was with the Franklin County Jail, so giving him his 20 years hazardous duty. But during his career, he's been a field training officer, member of the tactical response team, and narcotics detective. So we're certainly going to miss you and congratulations on your retirement. Good luck.
We want to give you a retirement plaque as well, so it's something that you can hang as well, it's a tremendous for your great service here. Will has been a tremendous asset to our department, as have all of these folks, but I remember when Will came, how exciting it was to get to know Will and his family and his children. He's a great father, great husband.
He referees youth football games, so he's going to have more time to referee this fall.
We thank you so much for having him, we'll see you-
Yes, sir.
The next is Detective Jeffrey Fogg. Detective Fogg's been with us 20 years, back when, when he came on, I was still an assistant shift commander, lieutenant, and he got the ride with me, so I got the break-in and ride. But for the past 14 years, he's been a detective. When he was on patrol, he was in FTO, he's a hostage negotiator, and he's one of those guys, we coined a phrase in the police department early in his career, was if you had a squad of Jeff Fogs, you could get a whole lot done. He was steady as she goes and he's been that way, he's been involved in probably every major crime investigation we've had in the past 14 years. But most importantly, Jeff has been the player coach of the Frankfurt Police Department basketball team, who's, in fact, one of the organizers of the Kentucky Law Enforcement Basketball Tournament, where Frankfurt Police plays Louisville, Lexington, and three or four state police teams. And our record is like one in 28.
Again, Jeff, thank you for over 20 years, I remember when you came as well and we're going to miss you, you're going to leave a big void, not just the department, but and our city, city family, as all the folks that are retiring are. I've watched your daughters and your family over the years, they've grown up to find young women. We're very proud of you and all your accomplishments, so we wanted to present this to you as well and looking forward to future contributions and other ways for our city.
Thanks, sir. Next is Sergeant Gerald Crawford, Detective Sergeant Gerald Crawford. For this over 21 years.
Congratulations, Gerald.
Another one of mine from the shift. We, as young officer, actually, he became a field training officer and back in the days when we had a traffic unit, was assigned to our traffic unit, so he was accustomed to writing a lot of tickets and being reluctant. So when he went into detectives about 14 years ago, they said, "Oh, you're not going to like the pace." Well, he stayed there, in fact, he promoted up as detective sergeant and has led that unit and their activities for the past 14 years. So he's been the one that's been responsible for getting a lot of things done back there, so we really are going to miss you, Gerald, congratulations and good luck in the future of life.
Same with Gerald, I remember when Gerald came on board 21 years ago, four months ago.
Yep.
And we've watched you and your family through the community and all of your contributions will forever be remembered with us. We always hate losing our folks, but you've been, you've worked hard, you, all of you all deserve this opportunity to get to retire. It's quite awesome to be able to do 20 years and be able to get out, but the risk that these folks take daily certainly deserves that recognition under hazardous duty, so seems like it was just yesterday that you came on board and then you've done a tremendous job on the street and in the CID division. We want to thank you for your 21 years and four months and wish you the best in your future and look forward to future contributions to you.
Next one is Detective Joe Barner. Congratulations, Joe. Talk about another steady individual, I tell you what, Joe, in his patrol career, was a field training officer, he spent two years as a narcotics officer, but the past six years, he's been assigned to the DEA task force, so he's been operating as a, basically a task force officer in the DEA office in Lexington. And he has been involved in numerous, numerous high-profile investigations, narcotics investigations in this region and multi-state area. And in fact, when the special agent in charge of Lexington office came down to lament Joe's retirement, he said Joe acted just like a, he treated him just like a regular DEA agent. That's the respect that Joe commanded there and we're certainly going to miss him, they're going to miss him in Lexington also, and just want to say congratulations on whatever his future holds for you. Thank you. Good luck.
It just seems like yesterday that you wore Joe in, I think the day that you got sworn out, remember the picture well, and you had your child, your baby with you, he's not a baby anymore, certainly wouldn't say that.
15?
He's 18.
Eight, wow.
Yeah.
I was going to say-
It's all about-
I still remember that day.
I remember it.
But again, thank you for your service, it's great to watch all of you all go through your careers, we appreciate your exemplary service, not just with Frankfurt PD, but with the DEA task force and making a difference in keeping our streets safer because of those efforts. And the family that you've raised, again, is a testament to your dedication to your community and the love that you have for your son and other family members, we appreciate that. 16 years and four months has flown by, but we look forward to future contributions from you and your family as well. And it's, now you can probably pick me up. Anyway, congratulations and thanks for staying with us and we wish you nothing but the best.
Is Byron here?
I think he's got a six little one, he couldn't make it.
Okay. The last one is Officer Byron Redman, he couldn't make it today, but I do have a few words to say about him. Byron, Byron's been a field training officer, in fact, he's trained officers here for the past, I guess, probably 18 years. He was probably our second, second generation tactical response team member along with Will Bell and of course, he's a range instructor. But the one thing I have to say about Byron, I've only known two officers in 32 years that could get more out of eight hours of work a day than that guy. And he beats the other one by far. He, folks, city leaders, I'm telling you, you got your money's worth out of Byron Redman. He, as far as activity goes, of course, he's probably written more moving violations than any police officer in this county, city, state sheriff, whatever. But I can assure you that he has written twice as many tickets as the rest of the department writes for Byron. You talk about somebody who was dedicated to traffic safety, and it's not just writing tickets. Over the years, he has led us in the DUI award, where he's arrested more DUIs, taking more drunk drivers off the road. You can't measure how many lives he has saved, so on behalf of the rest of the police department, I want to congratulate Byron on a great career and good luck to him on whatever he chooses to do in the future and just good luck to all of our retirees. One other, on behalf of the police department, Chief Posich, enjoyed working with you all these years and you've done a lot, the other department that are retiring, congratulations.
We'll get Byron this plaque later and we'll say some things about Byron if he comes, if we think we can get more of yours.
Get you guys all lined up. I feel what it's like to line up, right?
Having worked with Officer Redman over 20 years that he's been here, I don't know what Byron's going to do. He has been an example of expert police, and he was considered everyone the same, and I mean, they have a picture.
In fact, I'm sorry he's not here because I was going to get him under oath and ask him a question. Did you really give your mother a picture? It very well could be true.
All right, next, we will move into promotions and our fire chief, do you want to come back up and we'll do the promotions? Looks like we have four in the fire service and one police officer to be promoted.
Before I get into promotions, I'll say one other quick thing. When I first came here, 15, 15 and a half years ago, mayor took me into the conference room over there and said, "First or second day on the job, come on, I've got to swear you in." So he started reading, I was from out of state, I wasn't familiar with the Kentucky oath of office, he started reading it to me and he got to the part about swearing that I had never challenged anyone to a duel or fought a duel with the devil, and I thought he was pulling my leg first day on the job, so I started chuckling and he said, "No, chief, this is serious." I'll never forget that. Anyway, tonight we have four fire department promotions that we'd like to recognize. First, we have Lieutenant Sean Caldwell, who's been promoted tonight to the rank of captain, and I think he has his niece and daughter with him that he would like to do the honors. And Sean has been with us for 20 years and I've had the pleasure of promoting him from firefighter to sergeant to lieutenant and now captain.
So who's going to badge you?
Sean Ferguson-Justman is going to be running one of the substations as a station officer lieutenant, coming downtown here next to City Hall and having to work here, so congratulations. And as a result of Captain Caldwell getting promoted, we now are going to promote Sergeant Kenny Barnett to the rank of lieutenant. Mayor, you want to like to do the badge and I'll give the dog? Kenny's been with us for seven years now and that fairly quickly to the rank, to the rank of lieutenant tonight.
Usually we have to tell people I put the goggles on, but-
Thank you, sir. Congratulations. And next, we have two sergeant promotions. We're promoting Richard Gilkensson tonight to the rank of sergeant, and he's been with us for about 11 years now, I think, right? He also, Rick also heads up the floor host for the police department or assists with the floor host. Mayor would like to do one, I'll do one. You did a little one? Thank you, congratulations.
We'll get the clerk.
And final promotion in the fire department tonight is Eric Simpson for the rank of sergeant. I guess wife is going to do the honors badge.
I guess wife's gonna do the honors and badge.
Eric's been with us since, oh, you're a sergeant? Eight years, eight years.
Next, we have a promotion in the police department, which I'm gonna tell you, I remember when, when this officer was a little bitty thing. Jimmy Punt a little bitty thing, but I just remember when he was a little fella. And it's, it's very heartwarming to watch him grow and, and now become a police sergeant with us.
Chris, choir. His wife Kendra, his dad George, retired city employee, thirty years' service is here. Hello, George. Good to see you, buddy. George would bring Chris around when, when he was just a child. So I guess he had police work in his blood. Mayor, would you like to turn one on? Kendra? Just go right there. Don't push too hard. It's gonna have the backside. Chris is a ten-year veteran of the police department. He's, he's our dare instructor, one of our dare instructors. And he's been doing a great job in the schools. Chris is also known as a go-to guy. If you need something done, he'll get it done. When he first came home, he had an accident. It's, and now Chris is, is well-known around the department for being very handy. And he had an accident in his cruiser and I guess they didn't, I was a major at the time, they didn't want to tell me about it. So he and Russ Parsons, the deputy sheriff back there, he was on with us, went and got a new Ford Crown Victor at a junkyard and replaced the door, then charged the city a thing. They did all the labor themselves. That's what they had to do. If you were continuing to take the city money like this, you'll have a good long career. So congratulations, Chris.
We'll just stand at ease for a second and let our folks exit. I am sorry, I just unrecognized and saw our sheriff, Pat Melton, in the back of the room. Sheriff, it's good to have you. I hope, I hope I didn't miss you earlier. Always glad to have you. Thank you for your service.
I'm sorry.
Okay, now we'll get into citizen comments. And for those of you that are regulars with us or have been here before, you understand this. For those that have not been here, this is the time when we allow citizens to come forward at the lectern. And when you do come forward, just please state your name. You don't have to give your address unless you want to, but, and then just choose an item on the agenda that you're speaking on, or it can be something that's not on the agenda, that's fine. We do limit, during our rules of procedure, comments to five minutes. The city attorney keeps the time and lets me know when your time is about up. I'll try to give you a signal, not to, so as not to interrupt you, but please, we try to adhere strictly to that as we can. If we have a big crowd, if we don't have a lot of folks speaking, then we're a little less concerned with that. But we do ask that while someone is speaking that you do give that person undivided attention and not make derogatory comments or interruptions. And with that, I will go ahead and open up for citizen comments. And I'll just recognize you, if you just raise your hand or if you stand up, then I'll call on you and come forward. Mr. Poe.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Man, are there, Mr. Poe, are there lots of people stuck out in the hallway?
Yes, there are.
Is it possible that we could put some chairs up here? Somebody could bring a row of chairs in? Is that possible? Can we have somebody do that?
I think we've got every chair that we have out.
The question comes of concern is capacity, Commissioner Bowers.
Well, I realize there's a capacity. I don't know if we've reached it or not.
Well, I think this room is for, for one hundred or one hundred and ten. And I'm not sure, the fire marshal is checking. I don't think we have a hundred people right now.
This room can become stagnant.
But there's room for people to, to come in. We can, we can get more people in if, if people would like to come in.
Only a couple. We're good.
Okay. Mr. Poe, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Ed Poe. I'm a member of the Frankfurt chapter of the NAACP. Last month, the Frankfurt chapter of the NAACP met and we discussed some of the issues that you're going to be dealing with tonight. And as a body, we found merit in the quote-unquote fairness ordinance. And to that end, the NAACP Frankfurt chapter asked me to make a brief statement on behalf of the chapter. Since nineteen oh nine, the NAACP has advocated for justice, human rights, and for fairness for all. And we believe that injustice, denial of human rights and denial of fairness to one is injustice, a denial of human rights and denial of fairness to all. So we are supporting, not only are the NAACP supporting this ordinance, but we want to be out front with our support. And we are asking the city commissioners and the mayor to give serious consideration to the passage of this ordinance. And we also would like the ordinance passed without language that would in any way diminish it or lessen it from the original intent. I thank you for allowing me the time to make these comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you want to ask Mr. Poe a question?
Yes, when did you say that you all met and determined that you would support?
We, we meet once a month.
So when did you meet, when did you all?
It was about a month ago.
Well, this ordinance has been redrafted, so I would just say that you all need to meet again. If you're going to be supporting an ordinance, then you need to support something that exists because it was not drafted at that point. It's, it's had changes. So I would just, I would just recommend that you take the, the ordinance back and, and, and look at the ordinance. And I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just saying you don't want to approve something that you haven't yet seen. So.
Absolutely not. It's the intent that, that we're after.
Right.
And hopefully, when you vote on this, the language that you finalize will be language that will agree with the intent that we're.
Right. And, and the reason I emphasize that you take it back to your chapter and look at it again is there are many, many people who do not understand what this ordinance will or will not do.
Oh, I understand that. And we definitely will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poe.
Thank you.
Okay, any other citizen comments?
My name is Artis Monfort. I'm the president of Arts Electric. Been in business in Frankfurt for forty-two years. And I've worked over a thousand employees, have about a hundred and fifty working now. And this ordinance, to me, you're attacking the business people at Frankfurt. And you're gonna run away businesses for wanting to move here. Why would they want to come in and have to fight this? Why would they want to move here? We've been getting along with everybody. We try to, we treat everybody fair in Frankfurt. I went to school at Frankfurt High. Some of my best friends were color boys, whatever you want to call them. We played sports, we ate together, we showered together. Didn't have any problem with that. I treat everybody fair in my business. Now with this ordinance, there's gonna be some people that don't want to work, is gonna want to sue me because I've got to let them go because they want to do their jobs. Robert's gonna have to move people out of his apartment house because he's got to rent them, he's got to make a living, he's got to keep them up, and he could go to jail. This is a stupid ordinance of putting a business person in jail for having to do what they have to do to make a living. I don't have tax dollars coming in. I make my living one hour at a time, working for the city of Frankfurt, working for half, three-fourths of residents of the community that are here, that live here. There's a lot of people from out of Frankfurt pushing this thing through Frankfurt, and they're gonna be gone. They're out of Lexington, Louisville, Cincinnati. They don't really care about Frankfurt. They just want their rights protected. And I don't think we need it. We've been getting along for years. We haven't had any problems. So I just, I don't see why we need this. And the verbiage on some of this, you're gonna put a man in jail because maybe some person comes up and files a false report on him. Some judge says, well, maybe it is true and finds him guilty and they're gonna go to jail for a year. After I've worked forty-two years to build my business, I don't think I'd even offend him when I got out of jail. So it's not right. You shouldn't do this. We don't need it. Y'all need to really think about what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Phyllis Sower, and I have been a businessperson in this community for over thirty years. Also, I was kind of chuckled to myself as I heard the mayor refer to watching some of these youngsters come along because I remember when he was a youngster coming to school. And that's why I said thirty-some years and not how many, over thirty, it really is. I have three areas of concern about this ordinance and three areas of objection to the ordinance. The first one is legal concerns and questions that I have. The second is because of an exalted status that you are giving to behavior and acts of human beings over things that are fundamental rights. And the third, and briefest, are my moral concerns. First, the legal concerns that I have. As I listened to you at the work session talking about some of this language, the meaning of what is an indirect act, or what is an, what is imputed sexuality, the thought occurred to me that our next concern here will be thought crime. As I listened to you, as I listened to you, Commissioner Bowers at the work session, I thought how true it is that there is no demonstrated need for this ordinance. Most everything of, of the nature of a fundamental right is already provided for either at the state or the federal level. Why, where's the study? Where's the need? Why are we doing this? Well, we must be doing it in order to address something. We are even joining in a redefinition of the family here. And if this is a matter of fairness, my question is, there's some real constitutional issues about fairness in this ordinance as it is drafted. For example, you don't run afoul of this if you, if you don't, if you don't, if you don't, if you sell a house and you don't sell more than two of them in a twenty-four month period, or if you are a private club. Or I know you have adopted some language exempting churches, which I've not been furnished with, but heretofore, if the church had a commercial building, they could get in trouble under this ordinance. If they didn't have commercial property, then they wouldn't get in trouble under this ordinance. YMCA-type organization. So it doesn't really fairly equally apply to everyone. And the thought occurred to me, especially with this imputed situation, I, the definition of imputed sexuality, I want to put before you a real-life example of how this ordinance may have unintended consequences for people. I have a friend who owns several residential units that she leases. She has a rule that she always looks at the vehicle. In fact, she told my husband, John, I had never meant property to you. Because she looked at his car and if you've ever, if you get in John's car, he's got to make a place for you to sit. So she figures if there's that much clutter in the vehicle, that's the way they're gonna treat the apartment. Now let's say that two women or two men want to lease from her. She manages to have a look in the vehicle and says, hmm, no way. Does she have to ask? Or is she in trouble under this ordinance? And if she asks, is she in trouble under this ordinance? Those are some real, some real interesting situations that could come up legally under this ordinance. And what you do in terms of education is it go to, not to indoctrination. None of that is clarified under this, under this ordinance. Also, what if there's a restaurant situation and there, there are two couples there, heterosexual couple, there's a homosexual couple or a lesbian couple, and they're engaging in objectionable behavior? Is it okay to ask one to leave but not the other? How will that be addressed under this ordinance? My other concern, because I realize time is limited, is that you exalt under this ordinance the acts and behavior and choices of human beings to the level of race, national origin, and creed. When you were so concerned at the last work session about whether you were treating, were punishing equally under this ordinance, I'm saying to myself, why would you be punishing equally? Why are you putting these behaviors and acts on the level of, of race or gender or things that enjoy and should enjoy the special protection of the law? Finally, I have, I have moral objections because I do not see a reason for this ordinance other than that you are taking certain behavior and you're giving it the status. And the behavior that you're giving the status to is behavior that Old Testament and New Testament is condemned to behavior. I have to speak as I speak because of the last line of Romans one says also, those who go along with, those who bless this. You are giving a blessing for this community. You are exalting for this community behavior that, and choices that are, are unacceptable to many. Now, I hasten to say, I hasten to say, I am not in favor of treating anyone unfairly. I am not in favor of discriminating against anyone. And I'm certainly not judging anyone because that we can't do. But actions, actions we do have to judge. I encourage you not to destabilize our culture, destabilize our country any more than it is and oppose this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Folks, I think attorneys testify because they know when the time's up, they, they're used to wrapping up very quickly. So thank you for that. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Erin Wright, citizen of Frankfurt. I saw an interesting little news segment that I thought would make you all think just a little bit about your lifestyles and what's in jeopardy here. And I want all of you to think about this question. When did you all choose to be straight? And digest that. Because it's not a choice.
Oh, Miss, I'm sorry. Would you mind just, if you don't mind just directing your comments through?
Sorry.
That's okay. You can ask, you can just say.
Okay, yes. Would you all please digest that question then? When did you all decide to be straight, for those of you who oppose this ordinance? When did you all decide to be straight, for those of you who oppose this ordinance?
How do you know we are straight?
Does it... But you're here just to deal with sewer lines, so we'll talk to the rest of the panel about the ordinance.
My point is, you can't assume that.
Let's stop getting back and forth, okay?
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, mayor. We'll talk about sewer lines there. Um, so, but my point is, is that this ordinance, we're not, everybody seems so worried about what they're going to lose and what it's going to cost them, but yet we forget about what we're fighting for. This isn't a witch hunt per se. This isn't looking for reasons to sue people. It's reasons to give people more of freedom and comfort and the community that they love and support. And I think that this ordinance is necessary. I want Frankfurt to stop being an example. I want Frankfurt to start setting the example, and I think it's a wonderful way to approach it. I know that DOMA, for the Defense of Air Japs, is on its way out, but I had a thought the other day when listening to the news, that, you know, DOMA's great, and the same-sex partnership, which shares their benefits of heterosexual publishing, but it, you know, they're very good at that, and they're judged for their sexual activity. But what's the point of finding the benefits purely of straight couples? Because if you don't have a job, you don't have health insurance, so what's the point in being able to live in a level of hospital because you didn't get to be there anymore? So, I'm very much in support of this ordinance, and I think it's time that we set our example as a progressive community, not one that lives in the past.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor.
Go ahead and give a quick...
I was just gonna say to Mr. Monfort, we actually did direct the solicitor to take the jail time out of the ordinance.
The last reading I see is still in there.
Well, it's accidentally still in there, my understanding is. But I think it's gonna come out.
I'm back. I know you all are tired, I'm Eunice Monfort, I know you're tired of seeing me here, and I'm actually tired of being here, but I feel like I have to be here as long as this ordinance is before us. I want to go through several portions of this ordinance and tell you some of the concerns that I have. Under the definition of discrimination, that's the first thing I have. It says, "Any direct or indirect act, act or practice of differentiation or preference in the treatment of a person or persons." I have a problem with the way that reads, particularly when you link that with page three, and you look at the definition of a public accommodation, where it says, "Any place, building, facility, and so forth, which supplies goods or services to the general public, or which solicits or accepts the patronage or trade of the general public, or which is supported directly by the government funds." So, essentially, we're saying, any, any park, any restaurant, any club, any, any place that is open to the general public, we cannot either directly or indirectly show even any preference for something or other that deals with this act. I, I find that, that is a problem. Again, when you couple that, 'cause that same language is here several times about preference. When you couple that with... There's something, there's a section that talks about that we're not allowed to make any statement, any verbal statement. Let me find it. In ninety-six point oh-eight, unlawful practices in connection with public accommodations, it says, "Is an unlawful act for a person directly or indirectly to publish, circulate, issue, display, and so forth, or make an oral or visual communication?" Does that mean that I can't, if I, if this ordinance passes, I can no longer say I'm opposed to it because that's an oral statement? If I'm in a public place and I decide to make an oral statement that I'm opposed to something like this, does that mean that I'm in violation of this ordinance because I've made a public statement, an oral statement? That's the way it reads to me. I think, and it's there throughout this ordinance, and I think it's a major problem. Under definitions as well, under the definition of employer, it not only describes who an employer is, but it says that any agent of such a person can be held liable for violations of this ordinance. So, does that mean that one of our employees, a supervisor, or somebody who says something publicly, is in violation of this ordinance, and is our business to be held responsible for what they say? I think that's a major problem.
Ms., can you tell me, what section is that?
It's definition of employer.
The agent?
Okay.
The agent is under the definition of employer.
Okay.
Also, there are several times in this language, it talks about the fact that if you orally say anything that indicates that you have a preference for one thing or the other, it's a violation of this ordinance. I mean, that is a big deal, folks. That is infringing on my First Amendment rights. Under section ninety-six point eleven, I'm not, I'm not sure just how strong the language is there as far as, it says that the city of Frankfurt is prohibited, prohibited from substantially burdening a person's freedom of religion. I know that language is pretty close to what's there in the Freedom of Religion Act that was just passed, but I'd like to see something a little stronger in there that actually protects my right as an individual person to practice my religious freedom in this country and express my views orally if I choose to do so. Under ninety-six one point one four oh, this language bothers me. It says that it will be a violation of this ordinance if any person who allegedly commits or is about to commit an alleged discriminatory act. I'm on page, I'm on ninety-six point one four oh, it's about eleven sentences down, and it says, "Any person who allegedly commits or was about to commit an alleged discriminatory practice." How exactly are you gonna figure out what that is, "about to commit"? What is that? I think that's a major problem as well. The section that says that no employee, no, no employee of the city is allowed to talk about this, any information that comes in and so forth, and then if they do, they'll be fined a thousand dollars or in prison not more than, not more than a year. Does, is that in violation of the Freedom of Information Act? Because right now, if you submit a request under the Freedom of Information Act, within thirty days, you're supposed to be able to access that kind of information. You're saying here that if they give that kind of information out, it's a thousand-dollar fine, or they could be put in prison for a year. I think that's a problem. One of the things that bothers me as well is that there's nothing in here that outlines any recourse for the businesses, I see, where if an individual is discriminated against, and they have rights to pursue a course of action to be made whole, but I don't see anything here that protects the businesses. I mean, what if they are targeted? What if people frivolously file lawsuits against them? Yes, they can get their court costs back, but what about all the time and effort and energy it takes away from running that business to fight these kinds of claims? There's no protection in here for any business, that I see. I think that's a major problem, and I think it needs to be in there, it needs to be addressed. And I don't think we need to be in such a, a big rush to push this through that we don't address all these issues. This is a big deal, and it is a big deal to the businesses in this community, and it's a big deal to me as an individual. And I don't think we need to be pushing this thing through to meet some kind of artificial deadline just because we wanna get this thing done. It's important to this city. And mayor, I don't mean this as a slap in the face or anything, but I also have a problem, and maybe this is just the way it's done, I don't know, but the fact that all the members of this commission are gonna be appointed by the mayor, I don't care if it's this mayor or any mayor, that seems kind of like stacking the deck. I, I have a problem with that. It seems to me like it should be, those nominees should come from the city commission, or at least be accepted by the city commission, acted on by the city, city commission, and maybe it already is, I don't know about that part, but if it's not, then I think it should I also have a problem under the powers of the city commission, under number seven...
Oh, Ms. Monfort, your time is explosive. Do you wanna take a quick wrap?
Let me, let me just do this, and then I'll shut up. It says that you can accept grants, gifts, bequeaths, public or private, you know, financial activities. I am sorry, folks, but that sounds like a, a long streak of bribery. I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're deciding the cases, and you're gonna accept gifts for people whose cases may come before you? That sounds like a conflict of interest to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor.
Yes.
Can I just say to Ms. Monfort, the mayor only makes appointments after the whole commission approves the people that he recommends.
Okay, well, I didn't know how that worked.
That's just a standard, that's how most, that's how most bodies, go ahead.
I understand. My name's Jeff Sargent, and I'm a pastor at Bethel Baptist Church in Frankfurt, and I understand that this, that churches have been exempt, but I also wanna thank council members and Mr. Mayor for allowing me to be able to speak. The only indirect evidence for support of the fairness ordinance that I have seen was in the form of a letter out of a newspaper, to my understanding. A lady was passing through Frankfurt on her way to another destination when she stopped for a meal at one of her local restaurants. Due to the woman's ethnicity, the waitress did not acknowledge her or wait on her in a timely manner, and therefore she supposed this to be discrimination. She left the establishment and later wrote a scathing letter regarding the incident. The proposed ordinance will grievously injure, if not completely eliminate, business owners and professionals who operate their businesses or carry out their professions as an extension of their moral and religious convictions. They will be faced with the difficult choice of violating their religious liberty to retain their livelihood or to adhere to those convictions by overriding their religious and moral beliefs when succumbing to this ordinance, by refusing to follow this ordinance based on those beliefs. This may eventually lead to forced fines or even possible imprisonment for business owners, and I understand that language has been taken out. But also, we need to understand that this is not just an imaginative conjecture. I wanted to illustrate my point from an individual and also from an association standpoint. And because I couldn't find, well, anyway, I just read. The owner of Arlene's Flowers in the state of Washington is a sixty-eight-year-old lady named Ms. Dutzman, who throughout her career has employed people and served people who have identified as gay and lesbian. However, Ms. Dutzman also has sincerely held religious beliefs that marriage is between a man and a woman. When she was asked to provide flowers for a gay marriage commitment ceremony, she declined, even though the person that asked was a longtime customer and friend of Ms. Dutzman. Now, there was plenty of shops that wanted to provide for her, but, for the ceremony, but Arlene's Flowers was targeted because the owner had a traditional view of biblical marriage. This proposed, proposed law could also be used to threaten religious organizations who use their facilities as a means of interacting and ministering to the community. This may force a religious organization or a church to allow the public use of their property for express events that violate their religious beliefs. Case in point, the Ocean Grove Camp Meeting Association. This association owns a squarimal property on the New Jersey shoreline as a means of ministering to the public. The association formally hosted community events on its premises and weddings and its places of worship. In two thousand and seven, a same-sex couple asked to use the, asked to use one of the association's places of worship, its wardwalk pavilion, for their civil union ceremony. The association declined because hosting a civil union ceremony in its place of worship would have violated their religious faith. The same-sex couple filed the discrimination charges, and the New Jersey Division of Civil Rights found probable cause to believe that the association violated the nondiscrimination law. This case illustrates the grave dangers that a proposed law of this magnitude will have on the religious liberties of the residents of not only the city of Frankfurt, but also Franklin County as a whole. And perhaps inadvertent, but no less malicious, these proposed laws could engender discrimination against individuals and organizations of faith. In essence, you will be giving the gay and lesbian community a reason to target individuals and organizations that expressly hold differing views to the religious principles concerning this behavior. Again, thank you, council members.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else?
Yes. Hi, my name is LaShelle Montfort. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I feel like that I need to. I was born here in Frankfurt, reared here in Frankfurt, went all the way to school from first grade till senior year with Robert Roach. His dad taught me every very difficult day of U.S. history. Your father was my pastor and minister at First Baptist Church when I was little. Some of the speakers here have an idea that if this ordinance is passed, there's gonna be a flood of gay people, if they get fired or not hired, saying, "You didn't hire me and you fired me because I'm gay." That's not gonna happen. Just like when it was added into a law that race could not be discriminated against, is that a behavior? You know, this homosexuality is not a behavior. It's not a lifestyle. God, who I totally believe in, and I'm a Christian, created me, and I'm gay. I'm a really good person. I work hard. And I've been in a situation where I was forced out of a company here in Frankfurt because of that. It is more devastating than I can possibly describe to you. I didn't wanna be a poster child. I don't wanna be a poster child. I'm a very private woman. But this city needs this ordinance. I think a few things need to be changed that Eunice pointed out. They don't sound right to me, all of them.
If you don't mind, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we don't refer to people rather first.
That speaker, that some, a speaker pointed out, my apology, personally.
Thank you, that's okay.
And I don't think anybody should go to jail. And that definitely needs to be taken out. But I'm a very successful person, a businesswoman. I left that company and went on and pursued other jobs. I now work for the state of Kentucky, and I do an excellent job there. But I just decided after hearing some of these things, and some of the hatred, I don't get that. I mean, I'm a good person. Most of us are good people. I know there's some bad people, just like there's some bad straight people. We're just people. But I'm not the only one, I'm just the one that got up here and said something. I'm gonna go sit down because I'm shaking. But anyway, I just wanted to tell you, please, it's very important, don't let this happen to somebody else, and businesses will come here, just like they go to Lexington and they go to Louisville, because we're a progressive city. We know what's going on, we're gonna be on the right side of history. Don't be back in the dark ages and rah rah rah. It's either this way and don't include, not inclusive, please. Do the right thing. Vote for this ordinance. Thanks.
My name's Joyce Bender. I wasn't gonna say anything either, but I'm just gonna kind of echo what the previous person said and add maybe a little bit to that. I don't think anybody in Frankfurt needs to worry that all of a sudden there's gonna just be this army of gay people who are gonna come in and start looking for trouble, and when I go out to a restaurant to eat, I wanna have a nice time. I'm spending some money. I wanna not be treated disrespectfully by waitstaff or employees of that establishment. I'm just gonna come out and have a nice meal. I'm not got a chip on my shoulder waiting for somebody not to hurry up and serve me my bread. somebody not to hurry up and serve me my bread. It's not going to be like that. People just want to enjoy their lives. When you are discriminated against, and when you hear the things that are being said about it's a behavior, that lets you feel like, you know, somebody just thinks less of me because I'm walking the streets and they've labeled me that way. I'm just a person, too. I'm successful in my career. I pay my taxes. I wanna live a good life, just like everybody else does. And what I'm here to say tonight is, I'm really glad that we have separation of church and state, because when you all make this decision, whatever your religious belief is or lack thereof, we're talking about the laws of man, not the laws of God. This is civil. This is not religious. We don't legislate morality or religion in our, our civil life. And that's what I'm hoping that you all remember when you make your votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Lewis Bader. I'm right here in Frankfurt. Got a, obviously, there's some questions asked tonight, and I'd like to ask a couple myself, if it's okay with the, with the commission.
Of course.
One of the questions I'd like to ask is to the city solicitor, and that question is, what is the process to put this on ballot?
As a referendum?
You would have to have a petition with a sufficient number of
Signatures.
Signatures. And I, I don't know the exact number, but you would have to have a petition signed by a sufficient number of people that would then be presented to the City Commission. And, and if enough people sign it, then it could be a referendum on the next ballot and no input.
Okay, thank you. The other question I've got is, because what we've, what we've seen happen is that, you know, this has been brought up at every one of these meetings that we've attended, and it's, it's gained quite a bit, except for our local media. And our local media has quite simply ignored it, even though it's gained a popularity. And truly, it's the only way that you can be fair to everyone, even to those people that can't be here tonight, who couldn't get in the door. Because that does allow everyone, without the chance of discrimination, to be able to go into their polling booth and vote their heart, and you get a true reflection of what this community really wants. That being said, the other question I have is actually for the, for the mayor, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, Mayor, but it's, it's been asked quite a bit, and so I thought I just can continue to direct it. Did you have any contact or discuss this issue with anyone from the Louisville-based Coalition before the November 12 election?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I had a meeting with Frankfurt residents who, there was all local residents who invited some people from Louisville, but it was all Frankfurt residents that requested the meeting. In fact, most of them are here tonight. And I was very proud to, to listen to those folks, just as with any citizen group. And sometimes folks bring in people from outside for guidance and help. But that meeting was requested by Frankfurt residents. That's, I'm glad you brought that out, because I think some people have falsely thought that it's from an out-of-town root, but it's Frankfurt folks that started it, and I was very proud to, to meet with those folks.
Okay.
Well, that is a good question.
Okay, thank you. The other question that I had was
And you can only do two, because if more than two, it's gonna be cross-examination, which we do not allow. So you can ask one more. Of course, outside of the meeting, you can ask all you want, but during the meeting, we just have a rule.
Okay, so that, that's fine. With, with that being said, it was my understanding that in comments that were made at, at one of the previous meetings, that there was a large portion of this ordinance that was actually used, that came from the Louisville Coalition. Is that correct?
Well, I think we talked about that at the meeting. We looked at the Louisville ordinance, Lexington ordinance, and most of this, the asset solicitor, most of this came out of the
I would say that the substantial amount of this ordinance did come out of Louisville's ordinance. I will also say that the commissioners and the mayor did not tell me to use Lexington's ordinance versus Vicko's ordinance versus Louisville's ordinance. That was based upon my review of the ordinances and which ones made better sense from a legal perspective.
Okay. That, so one of the, I guess one of the, I'll stop with the questions. One of the, the concerns that I have that are, that are ongoing, and again, I would be, I would be in support of putting it on the ballot in order to be fair to everyone. Because what I, what I had difficulty with is that, you know, this determination that, that choice and force are not fairness. And up until about three o'clock this afternoon, apparently, we, we weren't able to download the current draft off of the website before the meeting tonight. And so that, you have to understand that that puts a lot of concern for a lot of folks, because that's the only place that we have access, some of us to the information. And so all of the items that were mentioned tonight, that were related to the ordinance, a lot of the general public here doesn't have, doesn't have access to. And of course, this goes a long way. My other concern, and I'll end with this, and that quite simply was that, and I brought this up to some other folks at some previous meetings, but the general public was only, there wasn't even a con and courtesy of a confirmation of the emails that were received. And I know that you got a lot of them, and that's, but that's, that's pretty difficult for, again, the folks that went to the trouble to exercise their right to contact their elected officials, and only four, four-fifths of this commission did not even get sent out a confirmation of those emails. So what I'd like to do is
Okay, your time, let's just send your time, so if you can just wrap her real quick.
Okay. Quite simply, it was, you know, we're aware that other communities where these ordinance have granted special protection, sexual orientation, and gender identity. Some persons who seek to live out their faith and not be coerced into actions which violate their sincerely held religious beliefs have been sued and accessed fines for declining to extend services for same-sex ceremonies with gays and lesbians and advocacy events. Allow us, as people of faith, to practice our sincerely held religious beliefs free government intrusion. With that, as you all know, the people's ability to contact each of you has been compromised in one form or another, which prevented access to their elected officials to express their opinions for or against. I trust you will do what is best for the citizens of Frankfurt, not Lexington, not Louisville, or any other city in Kentucky. If you feel compelled to take action on this matter, then be fair to everyone in this community. If you swore an oath to its representatives and put the issue on the ballot so that everyone can vote their honest opinion in the privacy of the voting booth without discrimination of political correctness or the coercion of special interests and lobbyist groups, you will then, only then, be including everyone who couldn't attend these meetings, send an email, or contact you via phone or in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to say.
Okay.
I'm not an orator or a public speaker.
Can I state your name for our record, please?
Yes, my name is Margaret Pearl Raymond. That's R-A-Y-M-O-N-D. And I'm not an orator or a public speaker, but when I heard about this fairness ordinance, which is not fair, the first reason it's not fair, it's not fair to Christians. When we started this meeting, everyone stood up and said the Pledge of Allegiance. And in that Pledge of Allegiance, it was "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Now, if we are one nation under God, then we should go by the Bible, which is God's word. And God says that there's not supposed to be any union except between a man and a woman. In the Bible, homosexuals were punished for being homosexuals. Now, are we one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, or is that just a lie? Are Catholics people lying that they're not under God? There's nowhere in the Bible that says homosexuality is okay. God punishes homosexuals. It's a sin, like lying and stealing and other things. Now, this is not a fairness ordinance, and also, this hurts Christian businesspeople. It goes against their religious beliefs. Let's say in God, a Christian bookstore, and you were forced to hire a homosexual. And that homosexual, the woman didn't dress like a woman, she dressed like a man, and her friend came in and they're kissing in front of the customers. Don't you think that's gonna ruin the business if it's a Christian business? And there are still a large majority of people in this country that are Christians, and it goes against their moral beliefs sometimes. They're not, they don't hate homosexuals, but they, they believe, as I believe, that it's a sin. And if you're pushing people to go against their morals, it's wrong, and you're not giving freedom of speech or freedom of religion. And that's all I, I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, we'll move on. Next item is ordinances. We have second reading, 4.1. So we have discussion on this item before we give a summary. No, I'd ask the solicitor to read it by title and summary only, please.
Number 4.1 by title, an ordinance to amend the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 152, by amending the City of Frankfurt's zoning regulations, Article 17 Architectural Review Board, Sections 17.02 and 17.03 of the City of Frankfurt's zoning ordinance. Summary, this ordinance amends the city zoning ordinance, Article 17 Architectural Review Board, by amending the makeup of eligible members and the number of members on the board from five to seven members.
Okay, you've heard the title and summary. Is there any discussion, or is there a motion?
I'll move adoption.
Move by Commissioner Bowers.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Higgin. Any further discussion? CNN and Clark, please call up.
Rachel Roach?
Yes.
Rachel Hay?
Yes.
Rachel Bowers?
Yes.
Rachel Higgin?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, item 4.1 is adopted. Next item is, item 4.2, and there are two ordinances, and there may be amendments. If there's any amendments, we can entertain those. If there's
Well, Mayor, I had
Go ahead, Commissioner Bowers.
And Mayor, do you want to
Do you want to go ahead and
To take a moment just to kind of go through the ordinances and
Commissioner, did you want to ask a question before?
Yeah, I noticed that the two recommendations I made were not put in here. And I was wondering why, because I think we all agreed on those.
Which ones would those be?
Well, in the resolution, I guess, like the preamble, I had asked that we have some statement indicating that we are a community that welcomes people, all people, diversity, because I really don't want it to look as though we're a city that has a horrible discrimination problem. Now, I have heard some stories, some particular specific instances, since I have last met with this board. But I think in general, we have a city that does accept people of diverse backgrounds, diverse orientations. And I had recommended that we have a statement to that effect in here. For example, it might read something like this, "Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the City of Frankfurt and the citizens of the City of Frankfurt welcome people, all people," or "welcome diversity," something such as that. And I think that no one had a problem with that, but it's not anywhere in here. And maybe, can I ask Commissioner Roach what he wants to say?
If he's making a play, or he can sure
To Mr. Bowers. I was thinking there might be a way to make that real easy. I like easy.
Okay.
If you, if you take that, where Paragraph 3, Mr. Moore's put in there on the preamble, it sort of says that, just not as strong as you'd like. So if you wanted to put strongly supports and, and then put, and then combine welcomes in the end of that sentence, I think you probably could get what you're after.
I like it at the front end of everything. I like it at the front end because it emphasizes that we are positive, we want to be positive, and if there is a problem, that this will eradicate that. Well, it won't, it will never eradicate discrimination, because you can't do that. But that we're already trying to be that way, and that this ordinance will just serve to do more of that.
Well, you can make amendments if you want to make amendments.
Well, I would like to maybe, we amend this to, "Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the City of Frankfurt and the citizens of the City of Frankfurt welcome diversity and believe that all individuals in Frankfurt should be treated fairly and with respect and dignity." Would that be okay?
Could you just say specifically the first clause, which says, "Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the City of Frankfurt and the citizens
And the citizens of the City of Frankfurt welcome diversity." It's just a suggestion. I didn't do that specific
So it would say, and what I did in response to your request, Commissioner, is you'll actually see that I added "and the citizens of the City of Frankfurt." That did not previously appear in the last draft. So by including that language, I thought that that showed that the citizens of Frankfurt did want people to be treated fairly and with respect and dignity, but certainly, you could add, "If the commission directs, welcome diversity and believe that all individuals in Frankfurt."
Okay, whatever. I just, I think that, my point was, I think we need to be communicating that we kind of already do that, I believe. I believe we already do that. I believe we're a very diversified city in terms of our population. There was one more thing. Gender identity, you didn't change that, and I think the commission did not have a problem. I think gender identity needs to be defined as one psychological sense of being male and female. Now, I realize on the surface that you might say, well, if your gender identity is consistent with your sex, then you'd be looking at sex discrimination. But imagine this, I go in for a job interview, and the person interviewing me is a gay man, and I am, and appear to be a female biologically, but, but my gender identity is that of a female. And this gay man has no problem with my sex being female, but he does have a problem with my gender identity being consistent. We need to set this up so that it doesn't pave the way for reverse discrimination. So I think we need the actual definition of gender identity there. And I don't think anybody disagreed with me on that last time, did they?
Well, you'll see, Commissioner, that I, the definition was revised to say, "Associated with one's biological or psychological maleness or femaleness," so that it covered your concern. I, I think you need to have the term biological in there.
But, but I don't think the word traditionally, I think the word traditionally actually sets it up that, I think you need to keep it real simple. Because if, this is gonna be, this is gonna be an ordinance, it's gonna be a problem to enforce anyway, with all of the, you know, thoughts about other people. Somebody used the word thoughts, but all the imputed and the perceived. And I just think it needs to be what the actual definition of gender identity is, to keep it safe for everyone. What do you think, Commissioner Roach?
I just, I'm, I'll be honest with you, I'm lost. Won't be the first time, it won't be the last. But I don't, kind of explain to us how you're, I remember the change that you asked for the last time, and I, and I thought
I think it needs to read
How should it read?
"One psychological sense of being male or female," or if you really want to get technical, we're living in such a period where people are so androgynous that it's the degree of your sense of being, if you really, I mean, this is just an area that's so hard to is just an area that is so hard to define. But I think we need to stick with the textbook definition of that. Because by putting the word traditionally in here, we are literally setting up reverse discrimination. It's easier to do that, in my opinion. I don't think the word traditional should be in there.
Perhaps if you described how the reverse discrimination could occur by using that term, it would help me to revise the definition.
I thought I just gave an example. I go in to apply for a job, and I am anatomically female, and I appear to be such. And the person hiring me is whatever, let's just say, gay.
Then you're protected...
That gay man doesn't have a problem with my being anatomically female, but he might have a problem with me having a gender identity of female.
Well, you're protected under the traditional definition of race, I mean sex.
Is there a problem with making the definition simple? Because we all agreed last week. Can we just make it simple? If nobody wants to, that's fine. But I think the word traditional will trip us up down the road. I heard somebody in here say more than once, there might be one case a year. There might be one case where this would present as a problem once every 10 years. But still, if we're going to do it, I think we need to do it. And we need to do it in such a way that we eliminate as much confusion as possible. And this could be a problem. I don't know if it's one in 10 years or one in whatever, but I think the word traditional presents a problem because...
Mayor, I don't think that deleting the word traditionally affects it. So if the commission wants to delete the word traditionally, that would be acceptable. I think it would...
So you're deleting not traditionally, those two words?
No, you would leave in not. You would just delete traditionally.
Well, we'll have to take these up as amendments. You're either going to do them individually or...
But wait a minute. Manifesting a gender, just, I want to take out the, okay, you've got manifesting a gender identity, not traditionally associated with one's biological or psychological maleness or femaleness. Why can't you just say one's psychological sense? Why can't you, why do you have to muddy it up with manifesting and associated with?
Well, because you need to say that if a person is biologically a male, but they are psychologically acting as a female, that's where you have the issue of gender identity.
No.
So you have to, you have to use the term biological.
You have a gender identity, no matter what, whether your anatomy matches your psychological sense, or it is discrepant, you still have a gender identity. So I think you're not getting what I'm saying. The way it is here sets it up for a discrimination that we're not actually trying to, we're actually trying to solve one problem here. But the way this is worded actually sets it up to easily discriminate the other way. I would just say, Mr. Moore, you have a gender identity. I'm guessing it matches your anatomy, but I'm not sure. And because they are two different things, you have to treat them as two different things, else we don't need this ordinance at all.
If I could interject, I'm looking at the definition of gender, and I think it does need to say biological, clearly. And the psychological reference, because of male and female, maleness and femaleness. I'm just reading the definition.
I just thought we accepted it last meeting. That's fine. We can wait 15 years and get a lawsuit that is there because we didn't address this, in my opinion, correctly, but that's okay.
Commissioner Bowers, are you, are you feel better if you take out traditionally? That doesn't get you all the way, but do you feel better about that?
I'd feel much better if we just said one psychological sense of maleness or femaleness. I would feel much better about that because I think it's real clean, and I think this is real muddy. And there's enough about this ordinance that's real muddy. I mean, sexual orientation is muddy. It changes over time. It evolves or gets discovered, I'll say it gets discovered over time. Gender identity is, you know, I think a bit muddy now, too, is we all manifest more androgynously and accept our feminine and masculine sides, no matter what we are. So I think we just need to keep it simple, clear-cut, and succinct, so that if we do have lawsuits, and hopefully it's one every 10 years or less, we don't have any problem with language in here that muddies it. In other words, if you, if you will define it the way I'm asking you to, it will provide more protection for everyone.
Mayor, I think you have to have biological in there, just because if you said manifesting a gender identity not associated with one's psychological maleness or femaleness...
No, no, you're not, you're not hearing me. I'm asking you to take out all of that. I'm asking you to take out all of that. You need to say one psychological sense of maleness or femaleness. End of story. Short, sweet, to the point, clear and accurate.
Could you like just tell me under gender identity, tell me what you're saying, so we can all make sure we understand what you're saying?
Gender identity, space. One psychological sense of maleness or femaleness, or you might want to say of being male or female, I don't care. But I don't think we need that manifestation and all that not traditionally and associated and all of that garbage.
But the way, the way it works, Mayor and Commissioner, is, is we're protecting the people that have one, they are either male or female, but, and that's biologically, but they are acting in a different way.
But I'm saying no. But I'm saying we need to protect every person.
And that's why you also have the protection against discrimination on the basis of sex. That's also in here as well. And that's one of the traditionally protected areas. So I'm certainly willing to be educated, but...
Well, we don't want to set up an ordinance that actually makes it easier to engage in reverse discrimination. And if you want to think of reverse discrimination, someone who is like, oh, I want to say like most everybody else, but I'm not really sure that's true because I think we're all so different. I don't even think we can even say one's all male or all female anymore with the way they perceive of themselves. But we have sex, that's anatomy, and we have gender, and we have gender identity, which is a sense of what we are. But, you know, I think the way this is worded, I'll say it one more time and then I'll stop. But my point is, we had a definition last week that we all five agreed upon, and I don't see it here tonight. What I see is something that's a little bit even more confused, not confusing, but a little bit more muddy than, not last night, whenever our last meeting was, whenever we last met. I think if you do what we recommended, this commission recommended, nobody objected to it, I think there was consensus, and I think it was unanimous consensus. And I guess it seems like a little thing, but this ordinance has the potential for having a great impact on business owners. And we all are here talking about differences that people exhibit and the way people feel different in their orientation. And you just have to clean up everything you can and make it as concrete and simple as you can if you're preparing to protect yourself in case of lawsuits. And, you know, here you're going to have to define manifest, you're going to have to define associated with, traditionally. Traditionally is a really tricky word here. We're becoming more non-traditional. So you've got some words in here that just muddy it, and it could be so simple. So I make the motion that we amend this to read, and then we can vote it up or down and be done with it, and I'll shut up. Gender identity, space, one psychological sense of maleness or femaleness, or being male or female.
Okay, there's a motion, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
And once again, Mayor, it was unanimous in our last meeting. So I wonder what has changed the minds of the board.
That's not what you said at your last meeting.
It is, I wrote it down. Absolutely.
If the motion fails, okay, Commissioner Bowers.
I do have it on tape. Commissioner Haynes says that's not what I said, but I will go review the tape because I actually had it written down.
We voted down.
It's a textbook definition. So I think everyone's changed their mind. So that actually might keep me from voting for this ordinance.
I don't think we did. I think, there may be, I think what we have to do under statute, not statute construction, but ordinance, law, constructing laws, is that have to be careful to read what the definitions are in dictionary, dictionary definition, and then also look at legal interpretation based on court cases.
This is a textbook definition that I'm recommending. And I'm a psychologist. But let's ignore that. So I've got definitions in a lot of my textbooks, but we'll ignore that. And nobody seconded my motion. So the whole commission changed its mind from the last meeting. So I will just say, withdraw my motion and move on. It will be a problem when I have to vote on it, though, because I don't know that I can vote on this. I am still basically undecided. I'm still listening to every person that gives me information on this, and this is an issue that's very difficult for me. And I guess the reason it's very difficult for me is personally, I have no problem with one being something other than heterosexually, whatever you want to call it straight. I don't like that word because it implies everybody else is crooked. But I have no problem with that on a personal end of things. But as an elected official, I have to think about what is my responsibility in terms of recommending what the government does and how much the government interferes in private business and private lives. So I've got a bit of a conflict within my own mind over this issue. And as I'm in the public, I see conflict, and I see it escalating, and I see, you know, us becoming polarized. And I'm elected to represent you, the people, and you, the people, seem to be split. So for me, it's very important, when I vote on this ordinance, every problem I have with it is as clean as it can be, so it makes my job easier. This is a problem for me with this definition. And if somebody wants to, you know...
Just to be helpful, Commissioner, if I may, this, and this is just one definition, and I'm sure we can find similar in dictionaries, but it says, gender is the range of physical, mental, and behavioral characteristics pertaining to indifference between masculinity and femininity. Depending on the context, the term may refer to biological sex, sex-based social structures or social roles, or gender identity.
Well, let's just put that big long one in there.
I think that what we have...
I'm just, I guess my question is, we had consensus, and why didn't we do what we decided to do? And it's not been done that way, so...
And there may have been, I'm not sure that we wrote down specifically what the commission, one of the solicitors wrote, I think he took our general guidance from what we discussed without putting something that we wrote, because we were letting the solicitor draft based on what he thought we were all saying. And if, if there's a problem, certainly, I don't think anyone meant to, to change anything that the commission had wished for. I think it's probably just trying to keep it as simple as possible and reading the definition. A dictionary definition does show the biological as well as the psychological. And just, just to remember, constructing laws has to be based on...
You know, Mayor, I will just withdraw my motion.
I was just trying to be helpful.
You're not being helpful. None of this is helpful. It would be helpful if we would just do what we agreed to do last meeting. But let's just move on because there is no support tonight. There was last time, and there's not tonight, so. I think those are the two things that I had questions about, because those were my two recommendations, and I just didn't see that they got changed. And then Commissioner Roach, or he's going to talk to you about the jail time, that didn't get changed as well, so...
And Commissioner, I don't think anyone was wanting to not do what the commission asked. And we can certainly, between now and the next meeting, if we need to review what we actually said in our last meeting, we can go back and do that.
Are we doing a first reading tonight?
We're doing a first reading, and if there's substantial change, then we can correct that. I don't know that changing the definition of gender identity would require us to do another first reading, but if it does, then we'll do whatever we need to do.
Well, Mayor, this whole ordinance is about sexual orientation and gender identity. So I think it's, when the whole...
We'll go back, we'll make sure we review...
If this is what the ordinance is about, I think it's imperative that we have the definition that we want to have before we try to enforce something.
And that's what we'll do, we'll just ask the solicitor to go back and review what we said in our last meeting. And if it's substantially different, then we can, we can change that at our next meeting and have a special meeting to keep it on track. Because I don't, I don't think, I mean...
Mayor, there were no votes taken at the last meeting, and people made suggestions. There was no, okay, there are three people that agree with this, or there are just one. So what I tried to do is I tried to take the suggestions that had been made and knowing the intent of the commission, make the revisions that were requested. For instance, that's why the words and the citizens of the City of Frankfurt was included in the whereas clause. So it was clear that the citizens of Frankfurt, as the commission requested me to put, want all citizens to be treated fairly and with respect and dignity. And with respect to gender identity, that's why the words or psychological was, that's why those words were included in that definition.
Did you want to make a motion on the welcome diversity and believe?
I'll just, you know, go back and look at the tape. But also, the Lexington Herald leader printed it accurately, I might say, and that no one on the commission had a problem with it. So if you want to go back and look at last Tuesday's Lexington Herald leader article, you will see that we all agree. But that is if you think they wrote it up correctly, and I was, you know, happy to see that they did. But it's...
Do you want to make the motion on your, on the, where it says add and welcome diversity and believe? Before we forget, because we have to. And that's kind of what this is. This is a work session, not a work session, a working document to try to get agreement. And that's why we have two drafts, and we understand that there may be amendments and changes. And that's why we want to make those tonight, so that we can get the first reading out of the way. I'm going to answer a question. Did you want to?
Do you want to do that? I thought I already did that.
We didn't actually just take the motion.
So you want a motion?
If you want to change it, we'll have to do it as a motion. Tonight, we have to do it as motions, but the last one...
Whereas the Board of, I make the motion that the first whereas, paragraph reads whereas the Board of Commissioners of the City of Frankfurt, the citizens of the City of Frankfurt, welcome diversity and believe that all individuals in Frankfurt should be treated fairly and with respect and dignity.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Bowers, second back Commissioner Haynes. Any further discussion? CNN clerk, please call it off.
Mr. Roach?
No.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Higgin?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, okay, that amendment is incorporated into the, I'm sorry, I need to go back and do one thing. In order to amend it, we have to, I have to ask you which draft we would amend that into, if you want to do it into both drafts. I apologize for that, but we will have, otherwise, that could be challenged.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I know you're pushing to have a first draft, and believe me, I wish that we got through a first reading tonight. I don't see any chance at all. So if we're going to go that process to a first reading tonight, and this whole commission wants to go ahead and go that route, then I think we need to determine it now. And if that's what we're going to do, we'll just stay until it's done. But we have, we have only gotten through one definition and one insertion of welcome and a couple of other words. And I don't think there's a Chinaman's Chance, or any chance, whatever phrase we want to use, regardless of your position, pro or con, to get this through tonight.
So would you like to do this in a work session?
No, I...
He's the same.
Well, we had a lot of comments from citizens that actually, you know, Ms. Monfort talks about oral statements, and there's some comments made by citizens. I was taking notes. So I think it would be appropriate for the city solicitor to go back and look at those specific things that were said. And if we could, I think we ought to address those specific things in a work session. Otherwise, we could be here for hours tonight, and we have business that needs, that requires a vote tonight.
Well, I just wanted to be sure that when we make them, and I was, when I just realized we have two drafts, I just need to know which draft, or we can say that applies to both drafts.
Then both.
We can, if there's no objection, and I just want to be sure that from a technical standpoint, a legal standpoint, if we don't do that correctly, then that will be challenged. I believe. So could we just say that-
We can just ask our solicitor tonight then about all of the points that were brought up out here. There are quite a few I had notes on.
Can somebody make a motion to incorporate-
Make a motion that we incorporate them in both ordinances.
Move by Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Haines. Discussion, CNN clerk, please call it off.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes. Okay.
Mayor, perhaps it would help to resolve some of the concerns if I just walked through the ordinance.
Thank you. Please do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
May I add one thing prior, just, just one thing. Solicitor Moore, the only thing I've noticed in both drafts is that the word age seems to be missing from almost every line when it comes to discrimination. That race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, familial status, or disability status seems to exist, but the word age fails to exist.
Oh, it's in, it is in the whereas, the third clause.
But it is in the beginning, but it is not consistent throughout the entire draft of the ordinance. And that needs to be there.
You want to make a motion to include that in all the definitions under, any definition that discusses-
I would just like to add that before you go on, Solicitor, that's all.
Okay. Okay. So Commissioner Haines is making a motion to add the word age to all paragraphs that include with respect and dignity, regardless of individuals' race, color, religion, national origin, familial status, age, it says disability, sex, gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation. So we make sure that that is reflected in all the sections.
Yes.
Okay. So move by Commissioner Haddon.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roach. Any discussion? CNN clerk, please call it off.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, now, Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you.
All right.
Pardon the interruption.
That'd be good. Thank you. Good job.
And that's an artifact of our Fair Housing Ordinance, because that was not included in the Fair Housing Ordinance. And that's where we started from. Anyway, what you have before, what the commission has before it is you have two, what I'll refer to as fairness ordinances. And I'll go through draft number two because that includes the local human rights commission. And under draft number two, of course, the, in the where-.
Okay. Sorry. I'm sorry. I was just consulting, seeing if anyone objected to calling it fairness ordinance, since it changes chapter six, 96 of our Fair Housing Ordinance. Sorry.
At the commission's direction, of course, we did include language in the whereas section, speaking in terms of the city and the citizens' interest in ensuring that people in Frankfurt are treated fairly and with respect and dignity. The ordinance now provides that in, in housing, public accommodation, and in employment, not only are people protected from discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, familial status, age, disability, and sex, but they are now protected on the basis of gender identity and social orientation.
Sexual.
Sexual orientation, I'm, excuse me. The, in the definitions section, one of the important revisions that was made is that the employer definition was revised to be consistent with the definition of employer set forth in the Kentucky Revised Statutes, so that the employment section applies to a person or business who has eight or more employees within the city in each of 20 more calendar weeks in the, in the current or preceding calendar year, and the agent of such person. And of course, we had one person mention a concern about agents. And it's, I think people will recall that agents are, of course, included when you're protecting people against what I'll refer to as the traditional forms of discrimination, such as, you know, I think we're all familiar with the lawsuits that have been filed because of sexual harassment or, or a hostile work environment. And of course, that's not where the actual owner of the business is engaging in that practice, although they could be. But it's also where the supervisor or just the personnel on the, on the factory floor, who are agents of the company, are engaging in that type of conduct. So that's why the word agent is in that definition. And it is in the definition of the Kentucky Revised Statutes. When you're talking about people who have disabilities, you're talking about 15 or more employees. And again, that's from the Kentucky Revised Statutes. Gender identity, I did add the word psychological in there to address Commissioner Bowers' concern. Family, the definition of family was amended-
That did not address my concerns.
Let me put it this way.
But that's okay. We're going to leave that. But just, it did not address my concern.
In an attempt.
Okay, that's okay.
Family, we-
Corrections, no.
We did expand that definition. And again, when you walk through the ordinance, you'll see that discrimination with respect to housing is on the basis of all of the traditional forms of discrimination is prohibited. And we've added gender identity and sexual orientation. Same thing with public accommodations, and same thing with respect to employment. Now, one, I, I think there are two general exceptions that are important. And when you look at 9611, we have the exception that was created by the General Assembly during this last legislative session, which indicates that the, that the city of Frankfurt is prohibited from substantially burdening a person's freedom of religion by the provisions of KRS 446.350. And so where a person by action or inaction violates the provisions of, of this chapter of the city of Frankfurt's Code of Ordinance, due to a sincerely held religious belief, the individual or entity alleging the violation has to prove by clear and convincing evidence that the city has a compelling governmental interest in the specific act that it's trying to make the person engage in. And, and then you also have a second general exception here, which states that this ordinance with respect to sexual orientation and gender identity does not apply to religious institutions, associations, societies, or entities. So we have carved out churches from the provisions concerning sexual orientation or gender identity. Okay? However, churches will still have to engage in conduct that does not violate the traditional forms of, or traditional types of discrimination unless they can show that they have a sincerely held religious belief and the government does not have a compelling state interest.
Commissioner Roach wants to ask-
Just a question, Mr. Moore. The, it's more than just churches, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Because you're using churches and the way the language is, it's broader than that.
That's exactly right.
I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yep. Yep. Okay. The, with respect to the administration of the ordinance, what would happen is initially the mayor or an individual called the fairness officer would have the job to, to educate businesses and people in the, in the city about the ordinance and its intent. The, with respect to enforcement, the way that works is that initially complaints would be made to the mayor or the fairness officer. The mayor and the fairness officer would attempt to get the people to, that are engaged in a dispute, to mediate or conciliate their dispute. If that doesn't work, then here where we have a local human rights commission that would be formed pursuant to the ordinance, if you have a complaint that involves sexual orientation or gender identity, then a formal complaint would be filed with the local human rights commission. If you have a complaint that only concerns the traditional forms of discrimination, that complaint would still be filed with the Kentucky Human Rights Commission. The, a hearing would be held on the formal complaint before the local human rights commission, again, if it involves complaint of gender identity and sexual orientation. The local human rights commission would employ a hearing officer that's qualified under chapter 13, be it the Kentucky Revised Statutes. And that hearing officer would ensure that, you know, the parties have the right to present evidence, right to cross-examine witnesses, and make sure that due process is provided. The hearing officer would then submit his recommended findings of fact, conclusions of law, and recommended order to the local human rights commission. And the local human rights commission would have the authority to impose a fine of up to $500. Okay? Now, I've talked about a local human rights commission. This ordinance does create a local human rights commission consisting of seven members, and they would be folks from the city of Frankfurt, and they would be broadly representative of employers, proprietors, religious groups, human rights groups, and the general public. And as, as we've discussed, the mayor would appoint the members of the local human rights commission. Those appointments are subject to the review and approval of the Board of Commissioners. The- ordinance also provides an option that if an individual wants to file a lawsuit directly with the court system, be it the Franklin District Court or the Frankfurt, or the Franklin Circuit Court, you would have the ability to do so. With respect, and one thing I would like some guidance on, on 96.19, prevention of intimidation, this provision was in the Fair Housing Ordinance. And it speaks in terms of people by force of threat, or, excuse me, by force or threat of force injuring, injuring or intimidating or interfering with someone because of their race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, familial status, or disability status, and now age. In this particular provision, there were some enhanced penalties where if you had bodily injury, then you could be fined not more than $10,000 or imprisoned not more than 10 years or both. And you also had if death results, shall be subject to imprisonment or any term of years or for life. You know, of course, the reason why the Fair Housing Ordinance had that language is, is clearly to protect someone from those very drastic and horrible situations. Now, of course, we could take this, this language out of this ordinance, we can do one of two things. We can make that language only apply to the traditional forms of discrimination as in our current Fair Housing Ordinance, or we could make that language apply to the traditional forms of discrimination as well as sexual orientation or gender identity. Or I guess there's a third option. You could take it, you could just indicate that a fine of $500, and you could rely upon our police and the normal process to deal with the situation where you have someone that's been injured, you know, suffered bodily injury, or whether it's slight or severe. So that's one reason why that remained is because we had discussed that previously. And perhaps the commission wants to leave, just allow punishment of $500, or perhaps you all want to include the more stringent language. Although, again, if you, if you take that language out, certainly if someone's assaulted or injured, that's something that could be handled in the traditional police manner. With respect to the penalty, generally you're limited to a fine of up to $500, although a court could award, or a local commission could award damages and not more than $1,000 in punitive damages. One thing I think someone was concerned about frivolous lawsuits, the ordinance does provide that the prevailing party may recover from the non-pervailing party the cost of the administrative proceeding court costs and reasonable attorney's fees. So if someone files a frivolous lawsuit against you or frivolous complaint, and you're required to go through the administrative process, and you show that there was absolutely no evidence to support the, the complaint, then you'd be able to recover your attorney's fees, or you'd have the ability to recover your attorney's fees, court costs that were incurred. Now, that's, you know, that's a brief description of the ordinance dealing where you have a local human rights commission. Ordinance number one is where you have no local human rights commission. And the difference in number one and number two is in the enforcement. Because in number one, instead of having a human rights commission, a local human rights commission that deals with LGBT issues, instead, the mayor or the fairness officer would be the individual that handles hearings on LGBT issues. And that's just another option if the commission does not want to create a local human rights commission.
Raise your hands.
Okay. On penalty, on the one of draft two, human rights commission, I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. The fourth line, the end of the third line, the local human rights commission or hearing officer shall be fined no more than $500.
Oh, yeah, that's a typo, obviously.
Okay. Just checking.
Mayor, do you still want to be the officer?
No. So can we, well, if we get, we'll clean that up. What do we need to do to clean that?
Give me a minute. I'll pull it out of the-
Wait a minute. Well, I think we've read that, let's read that in context. 96.99 under penalty subsection A.
I, I think when you do read that in, in context, I, I think that is accurate because it says-
That's what I was saying.
Any person who willfully fails to attend to, to testify or answer any lawful inquiry in obedience to the subpoena or lawful order of the state human rights commission, the local human rights commission or hearing officer, shall be fined no more than $500. So-
I think it's okay in context, but I just wanted-
When you read it in context, it is, it is correct.
I do know that we had, I mean, minor, minor word changes like the word and, doesn't have the D in it, that's, that can be corrected as, as a matter of not having to make a substantial change. So if we miss any, miss, any misspelled words such as that, those can be addressed as-
And Commissioner Haines, you may have been out of the room. When I repeat that again- again, when you read that...
It was quick.
That was quick. And when you read that in context, it actually is written correctly, because it says, "Any person who fails or neglects to attend and testify or to answer any lawful inquiry shall be fined more than $500."
I don't know if we need to take care of that by putting commas, if that makes a difference or not?
Probably need to, it might help to put a comma after the word "hearing officer."
Thank you.
Is there any, well, is there any objection to allowing the word, well, I'm going to just ask, if we add the word, if we add a comma?
And I don't think that's going to be a major change, but...
It's not a major thing, but does anyone object to that? Sometimes commas can change legal intent, but I just want to be absolutely sure. Okay, see, no objection. That is on draft number two. Any other members?
There's also a change in the word "and" to "and" in the first sentence.
That was the correction that needed to be made, and if there's...
Does the commission have an opinion on what to do in 96.19C where it speaks in terms of...
Which draft? I'm sorry, which draft?
This is, it's, it's going to be the same change in both drafts. So, if you look at draft number two...
Say that one more time. Okay, say that one more, section again, 96.
If you look at 96.19C, if you want to be consistent and just have the maximum penalty that could be imposed throughout, then you would, you would need to say, in C, the third line, the third line from the bottom, you'd need to say, "Not more than $500," period.
I make a motion that we do that.
A second to it.
Okay, any discussion? Commissioners have any discussion? If not, I have comments, but I want to ask commissioners if they have any discussion first.
Just on that aspect?
On that aspect, on that amendment.
And that motion would be for either draft number one or number two?
Yes.
Inconsistent throughout, so the following sentence as well? If death result, shall be subject to imprisonment, is that staying?
It's all taken out.
He's taking that out.
So, it stops at $500, and the rest is, I'm just making sure.
Yeah, I have that question.
I would just like to say I would disagree with that, simply because the current, the current law that we have includes that, and I'm concerned about housing discrimination, or any type of discrimination, but particularly as a deterrent to leave that in. Not that any, I don't know of any cases where a circuit or district court has done that, but it's always there as an opportunity, as a discouragement. And that would certainly be up to a court of law, to whether or not they would impose the penalty section. That is not for us to decide, that is just another deterrent to prevent, in my opinion, discrimination. So, do you have a discussion, or are you ready to vote? Okay, clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Hen?
No.
Any member wish to change or explain their vote? And if not, that is adopted. Okay, any other comments?
I've got some, but...
Commissioner Roach?
Is it time for that?
Quick, time for that.
Okay. You know what, the, I guess, as we look at this, we've got to decide which, I think, ultimately, everybody has to decide whether they're for it or not, and I think we, most of us have made our minds up on that, I suspect.
Well, you just heard I haven't, but that's okay, I'm still making it.
I said most, I used to work most.
I'm making it.
Okay, four out of five, I'm thinking, most.
You want to use a dictionary definition?
Sure.
Thank you, thanks, Mayor.
Sorry, I didn't mean to play.
I appreciate that. Well, it's good to have a little levity, we could use it. The second thing I think we've got to decide is, are we going to be for draft one or draft two? And some people are going to be against it overall, are going to be for one of the, try to get their preference of which draft in the same way on the other side. So, having said all of that, before I give my couple of things here, it might be a little more than a couple, I still think that this was a bad idea, not necessarily because it's a good thing or a bad thing, but I think it is a distraction over what really is important for this community. Now, that's my view, that's not a unanimous view. I ran, I thought in a, maybe it was misguided, but I ran hoping that maybe in a small way we could improve our economy and start to get more people to move to Frankfurt and Franklin County, and end this era of flat growth in all aspects almost, because of the diminishing viability of state government as far as their number of employees and their salary increases, et cetera, which has hurt our community. And I was hoping that would be our focus. We are having trouble making any focus on that, because we have spent so much time on this issue, I think that will hurt the community. I hope I'm wrong. Let me also say that once this is over, the world won't have ended. Whether this passes or not, the world will still keep rolling, and we'll need to come together to work on other things to benefit this community, and we all need to be prepared to do that and show the same level of interest, perhaps, in some other issues that we normally don't have two people here for, which are also important. So, having said all that, I think, I think if we're going to pass, if there are three votes to pass an ordinance, I think we should pass draft number one. And the reason why I believe that is because I don't think a Human Rights Commission is needed, and I don't think you have to look, look at a lot of emotion, I think you look at the facts. The Fair Housing Ordinance was passed in 1996. It was passed in order to get federal dollars to flow into this community. Well, I asked a question the other day, how many times have we ever had a complaint under the Fair Housing Ordinance since 1996? Well, we only have data since 2004, because that's when the two people that I asked started. They don't know about what happened before, we've never had a complaint, we've never had a fine or anything. And so now, and you may not have realized this, we didn't, the only protected class we have under city ordinances was fair housing. We did not have public accommodations, and we did not have employment. Why is that? Because they're dealt with at the state level, it's superfluous to deal with it at the local level, it's unnecessary. The penalties aren't as severe, you can't get as much done, that's why it wasn't done. And another thing, reason why it's not needed, the biggest employer in Frankfurt, in Franklin County is state government. There's an executive order that was signed by Steve Beshear that says, that made this a protected class, and allow, and you cannot discriminate against it in state government. The bottom line is, we don't need to spend the money on a Human Rights Commission that will generally not meet, they'll meet, but they won't have any, much to meet on. And the other thing is, is that if, is if they do get very active in this area, it's going to be a lot of litigation, it's going to be a lot of money, so I prefer to not spend the money as well. So, I think one reason why I believe draft one is stronger is because I don't believe a Human Rights Commission is needed. And I think the, I think the facts bear that out, but I'm sure others will, you know, have facts that say that it does. So, that would be one reason to be for draft one, and I don't know when the appropriate time is to vote on that or look at that, so I'll just go on to the next one. I'm concerned about the lack of religious freedom for individuals. I realize that there's protections under KRS 446.350, and it grants a strong exception. Matter of fact, I think if a person just came in off the street and didn't know anything about all of our debate, and read that, they'd ask why we're passing this ordinance. Because if you have a sincerely, sincere religious opinion, then they'd want to know, well, isn't that going to be contradictory? I realize then you start getting into language about compelling state interest and those kind of things, but I don't think most people understand that. So, I believe that we need a stronger thing for religious freedom, I don't think there's enough for religious freedom in here, even with this state ordinance. I think there's a, I think there's a potential for litigation, such as the T-shirt case in Lexington, other cases you've heard tonight. Matter of fact, there is going to be litigation, there's no question about it, if there are complaints in this area, because somebody is just going to say that they have a sincerely held religious belief. Now, they can be doing that because they have one, or they can be doing that because they're not telling the truth. Would, you know, I wouldn't be surprised by either one, but it is a way to get out of it, and so as a result, then it'll be litigated, and it will be expensive, and I don't think that's worth it either. I would propose a stronger exception that would give religious freedom for individuals regarding this, this aspect of the ordinance. And I guess this would be the first one, I would make, I would make a motion that we do that, and I've written one out, and I'll just pass it out here. Thank you, buddy. It basically says, "A member of the clergy, religious organization, society, business, or any person exercising a sincerely held religious belief regarding marriage, sex, and/or sexual behavior shall not be charged with or found guilty of an alleged or actual violation of this ordinance or acting upon or exercising that belief." And I'd be very open to whatever Mr. Moore said needed to be cleaned up, because I'm sure there's something wrong with it, because I'm not a lawyer.
May I say something?
Mr. Hen, go ahead.
With all, with all due respect, Commissioner Roach, I understand where you're going with this, but to say someone is a child molester and blames it on religious beliefs, and they want to employ people to do the same acts, although we all know it's wrong, does that open a door for someone who does bad things to have an outlet to protect them under something that's morally, ethically wrong in the majority of the population, but they're protected because it's their religion, if they claimed it to be?
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Commissioner Hen, and I think what, what I would want it, you could, I think you could target it toward that aspect of the ordinance, and therefore eliminate what you're talking about. I don't mean that just because somebody has a religious, let's just say they have a religious belief that they can kill everybody with red hair, I don't think that they should be able to exercise that.
Right.
So, I would want the parameters where it says married, sex, and/or sexual behavior, if that's not a tight enough parameter, I would be happy to be guided by whatever the city attorney said would need to be done, because I, by no means believe that then you should use that as an excuse to just do whatever you want to. It's, it's basically focusing on gender identity and orientation, because religious organizations and individuals with strong religious beliefs, many of which are going to believe that this is an infringement on their religious freedom, and this would eliminate that, so...
Can I answer your question, Commissioner?
The solicitor can answer.
If I may, Mayor? The, the way 9611A is drafted, that refers to the Kentucky statute that was just passed, and that, that protects everyone in the exercise of their sincerely held religious beliefs, unless the government has a compelling governmental interest in regulating that conduct. Okay, that protects everyone, and that, that kind of sets, that, that really encapsulates the current state of the law on religious beliefs. Now, when you look at, at B, 96.11B, that completely exempts religious institutions from the application of the provisions concerning sexual orientation and gender identity. Now, if you, if you, one way to, to address this, to keep what Commissioner Hen is concerned about from occurring, is you could draft a third, well, you could revise A to indicate that with respect to sexual orientation and gender identity, if you have a sincerely held religious belief regarding marriage, sex, and/or sexual behavior, then you wouldn't be charged with the violation of the gender identity and sexual orientation portion. And the reason I make that distinction is, you've had these restrictions on your exercise of religious freedom on the traditional forms of discrimination for a number of years, and no one's really, that has not been an issue before the city commission since 2004. So, the issue of, of, I guess, restricting a person's religious freedom has really only come up with respect to sexual orientation and gender identity. So, one way to, for lack of a better term, skin the cat, is to make the exemption that you're proposing, Mr. Roach, apply only with respect to gender identity and sexual orientation, and then just keep the current state of the law with respect to the traditional forms of discrimination. I mean, that's one way to do it.
That's what I meant to do, but you're a lot better at it. So, I make that motion.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Roach to have the language that he passed out, and as explained by the solicitor.
Do we have questions? Will we wait after?
We need to either dispose of the motion? Okay.
I was just thinking of...
It's either a second or not?
Well, it's not.
Okay, thank you. Now, Commissioner Roach, you still have the floor, and Commissioner Bowles, did you want to ask a question?
No, I do not.
Thank you. You have a question for Commissioner?
I would just like to be next in line.
Okay, on administration, I would ask whether it be draft number one or draft number two, that the chief administrator, not be identified as the mayor, but be identified as the city manager? And what's throughout the, both drafts? And the reason for that is, the, I believe that, generally speaking, as everybody knows, day-to-day affairs of the city are governed by the city manager, I just don't think this is something that we want the mayor, regardless of who that is, involved with, and I realize he can also delegate it, but I think it would be better off if the city manager delegated to somebody. So, I would make that motion.
Okay, to strike the word, or change any reference to the mayor, or fairness house, as the fairness officer?
Yeah, whoever, whoever is the...
Officer.
Under administration, whoever's, that the officer be designated to be the city manager, and that he could designate, he could delegate to somebody, but it wouldn't be the mayor. So, you just substitute city manager for mayor.
And would that mostly include not only the 9612, which concerns administration, but also the rest of the ordinance where it refers that the mayor would be the responsible person?
Yes, sir. One thing I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't strike where the mayor appoints the commission.
That cancels that, because he doesn't have the authority to appoint, so...
And I guess I would ask, ask you, Mr. Moore, because I know sometimes when you put two things together, it's a problem. So, I would also ask, and I don't know if this is where to put them, include this with this motion or make them separate, so you just tell me what, what I should do, I suggest that we drop the title of fairness officer and not have that title.
There's a motion.
But I guess maybe I should make them separate, which way should, make them separate? Okay, well, then I make the, I make the motion that city manager administer instead of the mayor.
Motion by Commissioner Roach, is there a second? Second, by Commissioner Haines, any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Haines.
What was the reason for putting the mayor in? Now, I realize... Now, I realize that in all, but they have a different...
It's the current law. The law that already exists, that's our current law.
That's the way it was in Frankfurt's fair housing ordinance.
So what we're doing by, we're going back and we're changing, a lot of amendments are intended to change the current fair housing law that's been in effect since 1996. Did you have further questions, Commissioner Henn?
No, I'm just remembering something that was stated earlier, that we haven't had, that so many cases come before the housing, but...
No. One.
Okay. Yeah, I'm okay.
Any discussion?
Well...
I'm sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Bowles.
I actually want to think about that a little while. So we're going to have to decide that tonight?
Well, we have a motion in front of us, but you can talk about it, ask questions if you have a specific question or...
Can I just ask, I mean, I realize our city manager, Mr. Zizov, is only one person that might end up doing this. Hopefully, he'll be the only person for a really, really long time. Mr. Zizov, do you have an opinion about that?
And I would happily accept your responsibility if that's what the commission decides. My opinion would be that it probably be best left with the mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor?
But to clarify, though, where the mayor can designate, appoint somebody else, or if you have a human rights commission, that takes the need and changes. If that makes, I hope that makes it clear. But Commissioner, did you just have a further question?
How do you feel about it?
Well, I'm for leaving the fair housing law as it is. I think the fair housing law that we currently have has worked, and by adding public accommodations and the other sections that we're adding, I think that we're just elevating, we're just making the current law include all folks, and instead of the way there's now, the current local law does not cover sexual orientation and sexual identity, as does the state law not cover that. And that's the whole point of this ordinance, is to put something at the local level that will protect people, protect everyone, whereas the current state statute does not, at this time, protect everyone. So I'm for leaving the city square housing law as it is.
As it is with the mayor, as the officer.
But hopefully with a city human rights commission that...
I absolutely want a commission, because I just believe, well, this is a small town, and there will be times where you will have to recuse yourself, hopefully you will, because you know everyone in town. I think that...
But let's think in terms of, not just me as a person, but as the office.
I'm thinking of whoever the person might be, whoever the mayor might be. I want a human rights commission, because there's going to be times where a person's not going to be able to be unprejudiced or unbiased.
Could go both ways.
Right, either way, it could go either way. I say leave it alone and leave it mayor. Was there a second on that motion?
There was.
Okay.
So we're just discussing that. Unless, of course, somebody can withdraw, if you're going to ask if you can withdraw a second, then the answer is yes, but we can also debate this for as long as necessary or vote.
I think I'm right.
I think Roach is next to you.
Okay.
My question is, because I too support the human rights commission, and if it's on the commission side, then to me, it's okay for it to be the mayor, because you got, it has other layers to go to. But my understanding was Commissioner Roach was recommending draft one, which only has it that certain way, and that would have involved the mayor much more.
Right.
Would you have a fairness order in that one? That's one of the reasons, I'd rather, at that point, it would be the city manager, because it is the day-to-day type of operation, so that's why I needed that clarification of that discussion.
All right, any further discussion before we vote?
So the motion is to replace mayor with city manager, is that the motion? Can you stake the motion?
And draft one.
Okay.
And if you're opposed, just a point of clarification, if you are opposed to any section of that, you can vote no. If you're supportive of any of that, you vote yes. If you're not sure, you don't...
Has draft two died? Did I miss that?
No.
We're talking, and this is prefers to draft one. I think there was a majority, there's, would be a majority of the commission that prefers draft two, so this is going to make it basically a moot point anyway, if we're going to, if there's a majority that's going to vote for draft two.
Probably just decide which one we want to go with, and then...
But I've got to entertain Commissioner Roach's motion.
Okay.
Unless Commissioner Henn were to withdraw his second.
I withdraw my second.
Then that disposes of that. Now, I went to try and see. Okay, now, I guess if someone wants to make a motion for draft two, we just want to make sure that you have that the way you want. Sorry, Commissioner Roach, were you through? You still have a four?
I think so now.
He had a second. Commissioner Roach, you had a second.
He withdrew it. I can go to the next thing, if that's all right. So it looks like that it's not going to change in one, and there's no point in bringing it up in two, so I would ask that in both, both choices, that the title of fairness ordinance be, or fairness officer be dropped. To me, it sounds Orwellian.
Do you have an argument?
No, I don't. I couldn't think of anything. I just wouldn't have a title at all. You can just have it as the mayor, or whoever the designated person is to deal with those issues.
Call it hearing officer.
What?
Call it hearing officer or...
Yeah, you could.
But anyway, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir, it's my motion, we drop the title of fairness officer in both documents.
Okay.
So it'll just read the mayor?
Or his designee, or, I'm confident our city attorney can come up with something that would be, that would work.
I have a second, I'm okay with that.
I'm sorry, move it second, I was thinking...
Will call for the question?
You can, but somebody have any questions, comments?
What are we calling him?
The mayor or his...
Designee question.
Just designee?
The only concern I have is if someone, if we don't have a pre-designated person, it could be called something else, that the mayor could appoint any staff member and put undue pressure on a staff member or someone to vote a certain way. Just a thought. Not saying that anybody would, but we don't know what future people are going to do. Any discussion?
So the motion right now is to remove hearing officer?
Well, to strike the word fairness. Then this would leave the word, or the mayor, or officer endeavor.
His designee. Has that person ever been called with anything else, by knowledge, in that kind of position?
We have not had it. This is the first time, it has always been just the mayor.
I do think it would just be less complicated to leave it as it is, since this says fair housing, and the point you just made is a good point.
Okay, any other discussion?
So I'll call for the question again.
Okay. Thank you. Clerk, please call Rob.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Henn?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
No.
Commissioner Henn?
No.
Mayor Matt?
No.
Motion fails.
State says fairness officer, isn't it?
Yes.
So it's not fair housing officer.
Another thing that I would want to try to get applied to either ordinance has to do with schools. We talked a little bit about it the last time. I still think the schools should be free to deal with this issue with their employees, however they wish. I think there may be some cases when they may find discrimination warranted in gender identity and orientation. Like, for example, let's just say, I really can't think of very many off the top of my head, but let's just say that as time goes on, and going with Commissioner Bowles' definition, that somebody's psychological awareness of their gender, one year is male, but next year is female, and that's a teacher in the school, and they're teaching middle school kids or elementarys kids. Is that something that we really want? And I would argue that, no, that's not a good idea, it would create turmoil and be a problem. So therefore, I think the schools know better how to deal with those issues than we do, and so therefore, I think they should be exempted from the entirety of the ordinance.
So that would be, and that would be exempt from the entirety of the ordinance with respect to gender identity and social orientation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you put that in form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's a motion, and is there a second? That one dies, like a second. I'm going a little bit longer tonight, just to make sure that we are giving everybody a chance. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Moore, in 96.11B, and 96.07A, probably should have given you the other one first, I'm sorry, are they in any way contradictory? The general exception under A on 96.11, and then the language in 96.07, are we all right? Particularly A under 96.07, and A under 96.11? Yes, sir.
Which is the statute?
Yes, sir. And then 96.07A under exemption?
Which is our current law?
If they work together fine, I'm fine, I just, I was a little confused.
Did you want...
Maybe out of a, a sense of caution, just because that 96.07A exemption is a little confusing.
Yeah, I can't understand it.
I think it would, it would probably make sense to add language indicating that 9611A takes precedence. Let me think about how that language, if you've got another issue, you could move to discuss. Are you thinking of language?
I will, thank you. Except, these are, I think these are both questions for you, but you can probably do two things at once.
Doctor, pick your hand.
The, what about the YMCA, Salvation Army, Christian schools that might have a business, et cetera? Mr. Moore, would they be covered under the B under 96.11, provided they don't get the majority of their revenue from the government?
And it also references in 9608?
Yes, sir.
I think we need it both places, because as institutions change, you know, we've got YMCA, YWCA, and similar type dormitory lodging facilities, obviously what you're looking for is where you can separate where YMCA or where they've got lodging facilities, and we really don't have it.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not at, I'm not at the, I'm on a, I was asking about 96.11 under B, whether, how, where the YMCA, Salvation Army, a Christian school that may have a business, those type of entities where they would fall, would they be, would they be covered under that general exception, provided they don't get a majority of their revenue from the government?
Is the YMCA operated or owned, operated, or controlled by a religious institution? I don't think so. So they would not be...
Okay, so I'm asking, what about Salvation Army?
Heart to God, hand to man, that's what they're, the mother is, so I'm thinking they're a church. I believe they're a church.
Salvation Army is probably a little different. They probably are, would fit within this exemption.
What about Christian school that had a business?
I would think that's a religious institution.
Okay, well, all right. Thanks, the, well, 96.08, under the restrooms and all that type of thing? Are we good there? I'm a little confused on that.
Which, which section are we on, Commissioner? A, B?
I'm sorry.
9608, B, I mean, sorry, C.
C.
1A.
Yes, because that says if you're a, if you're a male, you got to go to the male's bathroom, if you're a female, you got to go in the female bathroom.
Got it. Thank you.
But if you're anatomically male and genetically female?
It's all right, it's all right, we need a little humor.
Was it funny? I'm sorry.
I think it's funny. I did too. I didn't laugh, not while I was trying to...
Um, under the, number two, ordinance two, under the powers, under the Human Rights Commission, I think it's, help me out there, 96.16, maybe? Let me get over there.
96.16, that's correct.
Thank you, sir. I would like to strike under number six, that we not employ an executive director. Keep the rest of it, but not, but get rid of that. Make motion that we do not employ an executive director.
And to clarify, not employ or to strike it completely?
I strike it completely.
I'll second.
What's the number on that?
Six.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Row, second by Commissioner Henn.
Can you stake that again, please?
My motion is that we strike an executive director, comma, from number six, 96.16.
Okay, now I want to clarify what that does. This is a clarification. If we strike that language, it not only strikes the word executive director, but would prevent the employment of attorneys, hearing officers, clerks, and other employees and agents?
No, sir, it does not.
You just want to strike the word executive director?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I want to be clear on. Okay, so we're just bracketing, strike the executive director.
Can I ask...
Mayor, you can really bracket and executive director, comma.
And executive, sorry.
So it says employee, attorneys, hearing officers, clerks.
And so we're just striking the word and executive director from subsection six?
And I'm asking Commissioner Roach to explain his reasoning.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Roach, if you want to answer.
I'm happy to answer. Money, I, when, if you get, if you, if you have an executive director, all of a sudden you're going to spend a lot of money, and all of a sudden, you're going to find a lot of problems that probably don't exist, and so therefore, I believe you're going to spend enough money on attorneys, hearing officers, clerks, and other employees, that you're not going to need an executive director, given the staff and the people that we have, we can cover that piece. That's just what, what I was thinking.
There will be a chair.
If this is dealing with the term employee...
He's just saying not to employ an executive director, and I think if there's a need later to employ an executive director due to a number of, high number of cases, or a number of cases, then we can always go back and add that in later. But this would still allow for cases that come up, if outside counsel is needed, such as what we do sometimes on our ethics board, or any other board, then it would just still allow, that would be in line with, with current practice on other boards and commissions appointed and representing the city. So any other?
Just clarification, and I'm okay with striking the executive director, but the other ones that are on there, does that mean as needed? Or we just employ them?
It would be as needed.
Just as needed.
Okay.
But if you want to clarify that, and say as needed, we certainly can.
I'll write it on my copy.
I'll write it on mine. Add it.
Add it.
Can I ask a question? They would, would they, this commission not have to get approval from this board to do that? Could they just go hiring these entities without somebody represent, I mean?
The way it's currently drafted, it would allow the Commission of Human Rights to be authorized to do so. If there's no appropriation, though, the, the city commission would still have to appropriate.
Could I amend my motion?
You sure may.
I'd strike number six.
Now we have to deal with the motion. Uh, I mean, the amendment, and Commissioner Roach's amendment is to basically amend the original motion.
Yes, sir.
And which actually would strike the whole language. So is there, is there a second to his amended motion?
I'll second it, so I can ask questions.
That was close.
Just so I can ask. Um, okay.
Now, this is on the amended, the amendment.
This is to strike all of six. So, Mr. Solicitor, do you, like, would you then serve as legal counsel for these types of, if they cannot employ attorneys or, or clerks? Would our city clerk then, would our staff be doing some of that? That, would it be doing that? Or maybe, Commissioner Roach, your motion would just leave it open for the City Commission to do that, or?
Well, my, the only reason why I amended my motion was because I didn't realize, probably because I just didn't get it, I didn't realize that, that this commission would be able to do all of those things without any voting from the City Commission. I realized we could change their budget each year or what have you, but I, I think in general, that's a bad idea to give that power to anyone. I, I, I don't think it's necessarily going to be abused, but why risk it? So therefore, I, I think maybe that needs to be constructed differently. And I'd be happy to re-amend it again if needed, but I'm not comfortable with the way it's written and that their ability to do that without oversight.
Well, I'm just thinking, based on what we heard in several meetings, there would be one case, I can't remember, was it one in a year or something like that? There wouldn't be any need for these people, except maybe legal counsel, but there's Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore, would you be involved in this? Would that be part of your, would that be part of your job description?
Well, I'm going to do what every good lawyer does, I'm not gonna ask you a question.
Correct.
Instead, I'm gonna say, you have to, you have to be able, the commission has to be able to employ a hearing officer.
Yes, sir.
So you have to have that language in there.
Okay.
I think the, uh, the commission has to be able to employ clerks and other employees and agents as needed.
Right.
I, I don't think that you necessarily have to include an executive director or attorneys in that, in that paragraph six. And, you know, if, if directed by the City Commission, and they tell me that, you know, I need to be counsel for the local Human Rights Commission, that's what I would do?
So we would have to have a clerk that existed, even if there's no work to do?
No, no, if you say as needed, then you would say, okay.
So you're gonna run an ad for like a two-day, you know, I don't understand.
It would be similar to our ethics board, when we have ethics violations proposed or alleged that are investigated by the Ethics Commission, Ethics Commission, our local ethics board, so I keep, we're called an ethics board, the state said, French Ethics Commission. Our Board of Ethics, as needed, would request the hiring of outside counsel, any type of clerk to take any type of clerical duties minutes. And sometime, we might have, trying to think, who else would we hire that we hired hearing officers?
And we've had a court reporter, I mean, we get, your, Mayor, you'll recall, several hearings that have been held, the city hasn't employed a court reporter to come and prepare a verbatim transcript for sources of appealing from the decision.
That's when we know we're gonna get sued.
I, I guess what, and it, it may be that we can figure out a way to make this a little cleaner. I'm, I'm trying to avoid, with the Ethics Commission, they haven't met very often either, but they did have that one issue, and I think it cost twenty or thirty thousand dollars for, for the city. So whatever we can do to minimize costs on number six, and if it's just, just take out executive director and attorneys, or just executive director or something, I think it's a good idea, but I don't want to get bogged down on it. I just thought that that was too much power to grant a commission without any oversight. And I'm open to suggestions.
This is on the amendment to the original motion?
Yes, sir.
Well, but our solicitor just basically told us that we can't really do what the amendment would have us do.
Well, you can, you can strike an executive director and attorneys.
Yes, but the amendment was to strike the whole thing, so.
Well, I withdraw that amendment and, and.
Okay, the original motion is to strike the word "and" executive director, so are you ready for the question? Any other comments?
Well, I, I'm sorry, Mayor, it's, I want to add lawyers to it as well.
Attorneys.
Attorneys.
Okay, then you'll need to amend your motion to include attorneys. So do you want to make a motion to amend?
Yes.
And include the word attorneys. Is there a second for that?
Yes, second.
Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion on the amended motion, which includes the word attorneys?
Yes, now they need, now they need to contract with an attorney, what do they do? They need an attorney, they need to get one. What do, what do we do, since they can't do it? Does it come back to the commission? Okay.
If it costs more than twenty thousand.
Okay. And if it doesn't?
You know, you can always, I don't want to make this more complicated, but we can always put stipulations in there that say appropriations above a certain dollar amount will require approval by the City Commission, our Board of Commissioners, but, you know, I mean, that's, I don't want to make it more complicated.
I think that would make it easier to administer, though, if we had something like that there.
Or as, as budget.
Especially since we're not gonna have many cases, they tell us.
And if you put zero in the budget, then I have to come back and ask anyway. I'm just making, I'm just trying to look at ways that somebody could do it. All right, is there any more discussion on the amend, the amended?
Just for clarification.
Yes.
It is to employ hearing officers, clerks, and other employees and agents as needed. That's how it's going to read.
If the amendment passes?
Yes, ma'am.
If it passes, that's how it's going to read.
That's how it would read.
Thank you.
Final, so if you're not sure, like, let's all ask Commissioner Bowers.
Yes, I'm not sure. I like your idea of with appropriating so much, and then have some process whereby if we need to go beyond that, it comes back to the commission, so could we have, that is another amendment?
I don't know that we would need to, but, because right now, I don't know that anybody's gonna make a, in a budget, we're gonna put any money in there initially, because we don't anticipate, we hope there's no cases, we certainly always hope that. And we, we could always do budget amendments as required or needed. I think that's what we did on.
What?
That would cover both.
Can you make another one?
No, I said, I said what the mayor said will cover both things.
Can you get a vote?
Yeah, would you state the motion, and then we'll have the question?
There's a motion to strike the word "and," the words "and" executive director after the word "employee" in subsection six of ninety-six point sixteen. And there's an amended motion to also strike the word "attorneys." An appropriate comma would be also removed.
So employ hearing officers, clerks.
And then you would add the words "as needed."
Yes, sir.
So, Mayor, employ hearing officers, clerks, and other employees as needed, period?
And agents.
And agents, as needed. And if we get into this later on and find out we need to do something else, we can Any other questions? Okay, we'll vote on the amendment, which includes the word attorneys. All those in favor of adding, I'm just gonna do a roll call. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henn?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes. The original motion would be to strike the words, as you already know, unless you need to restate it, we will do it, if not. Please call roll.
On what?
Oh, the original motion.
What's the original motion?
The original motion is to strike the words "and" executive director, and as amended, includes the words "attorneys," and as at the end, the word "agents," so you actually.
Mayor, we've got some confusion down here. We thought we just voted on that.
We just voted on that.
That was of the amendment.
Well, then, can, we need to.
The original motion, I'll restate it. The original motion is to strike the words under ninety-six point sixteen, subsection six, after the word "and," I'm sorry, after the word "employee," strike "and" executive director, comma, attorneys, and add at the end, after the word "agents," insert, comma, as needed, then period. Is that correct?
The comma has to be there.
If you're not sure, we, we want to make sure. So what basically he's doing is taking out the words "executive director" and "attorneys."
And that's what we want.
And then said, "as needed," and then said "as needed" is at the end.
That's what we want.
So if you're comfortable?
Yes.
Okay, clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henn?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, all right. That is amended. Request for a two-minute, five-minute recess.
I'm moved that we take a five-minute recess.
Move by Commissioner Bowers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Haynes. All those in favor speaking up and saying aye? Uh, just put a like sign, as have it. Five-minute recess, strictly enforced.
Are you not freezing? I, I got poured on from the rain, and then I'm.
Commissioner Roach, you still have this for our?
I would ask it under ordinance one, ordinance two, and we'll clarify that in just a second, I think. Number seven, which was right after the one we were just talking about, Mr. Moore, under powers.
Ninety-six seven.
I guess I have a question, and then maybe a motion after that.
You're ninety-six sixteen, my fault.
Right, ninety-six point one-six, number seven. Is that typical for commissions we set up, or independent entity, or entities that we set up? That kind of language?
That is in there in case someone wants to donate office space or services, but that is not typical. Would you agree with that, Commissioner? So I could just.
Let me check one thing.
And that's not saying members of the commission, we're just saying the commission as a body.
Yes, sir.
That, for instance, that would not be typical, we don't have that for the Board of Ethics, but at the same time, I, I would think that if someone wanted to make a large donation to the Board of Ethics, that the city would accept that donation.
Are you saying whether we had the wording or not, the city would accept it?
Yes.
Okay. And just for further point of clarification, Commissioner, the city's ethics ordinance would also apply to members of the Human Rights Commission, because it covers all officers unless we exempt them, and this ordinance does not exempt members of the Human Rights Commission from that ordinance. So individually, members would not, they would have to comply with what the current ethics ordinances.
And, and Mayor, to further clarify, the grants, gifts, or requests would be made to the Human Rights Commission, not to.
That's what I said, as, as an agency, as an, the agency itself is.
Hey, I'll skip that one. Ninety-six point one-four. I guess I have two questions. The first question is, you know, a little ways down there, Mr. Moore, the, it has, who allegedly committed or was about to commit the alleged discriminatory practice? So it's about, let's say, ten lines down?
Right, I see what you're referring to.
You know, I don't understand that, and why that's in there.
That is actually in our Fair Housing Code.
Yes, sir, I could see that being in there.
Right, and, and so that's why that is in there, and of course, what that means is that if, if you had two people who decided that they were going to work together, let's, you know, let's, we're not gonna hire Joe because he's an LGBT, and then they, they, you know, they're make, they're having that discussion, and they have not yet told Joe he doesn't have a job, and that would be a violation of the ordinance.
So how will they know? I guess what I'm saying is, you're giving an unele, a we would be giving an unelected body the power to determine whether or not, and I realize they have the power to find out facts and those kind of things, but allegedly and about to commit, seems pretty easy just to use that as a, a way to abuse power. I was wondering if there might be a way to clarify that and still get the same goal without leaving that open door. Because it's like, you know, you always say, it's not that you don't trust people, but you want to create a situation so that it doesn't get people in trouble.
That comes back to a little bit about philosophy, and that is, do you want to stop them discussing it at the time they're discussing the actual act, or do you want to wait until they've actually engaged in the act? So if you want, you know, you could say, well, let's just make the, the actual commission of the alleged discriminatory practice be the violation.
Well, that would be my preference, because I don't think, I think that, I think the other way leaves too much of a door open to mischief.
I would say that certainly conspiracies are prosecuted on a daily basis.
Yes, sir.
And I would also say that there are many, many decisions that are made by administrative agencies, and such as a local Human Rights Commission. So you have commissions, I mean administrative agencies, which are not courts and which are not elected bodies, making these types of decisions in many areas of the law.
And perhaps some of it would be appropriate, I just don't think this one it is, but I understand that. And I would, I would make the motion that that, perhaps you can help me, Mr. Moore, I would make a motion that went with that second thing that you said, which, which would be after the commitment of the act.
Now, so you said you made a motion.
I'm trying to have your head.
So you just wanted to say, and to the person, and of course, here in this enforcement, they're just, they're talking about providing a copy of the complaint.
Well, that was another one I wanted to ask you about. Yes, sir.
This is where they're just providing a copy of the complaint to the person who allegedly committed or was about to commit the alleged discriminatory practice.
Okay, all right, well, I understand, I didn't, that's my fault. I, I understand it now. Hopefully, this is the last thing.
So you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw that motion, yes, sir. I didn't, I didn't understand, the last time we met, and I've not understood it in any ordinance that I've read, why we are furnishing the state copies of the complaint having to do with gender identity and sexual orientation when they don't do. to do with gender identity and sexual orientation when they don't deal with that.
Hopefully, that's current. Because we're, current law that we have.
But that's not their law, so that, I don't see any point in it.
Well, I think, are we trying to distinguish between the filing complaints, forwarding complaints to the state Human Rights Commission under the fair housing and the current ordinance, and keeping the local Human Rights Commission with jurisdiction over sexual gen, sexual identity and gender? Sorry, gender identity and sexual orientation, to be more specific. I mean, I think that the intent is to try to keep sexual orientation and gender identity at the local Human Rights Commission level, and all the current exemptions or current ordinance provisions that would go to the Kentucky Human Rights Commission.
That's, that's basically correct. However, where you do have a complaint that, a single complainant alleges both violations of the, that deal with sexual orientation and gender identity, and the complaint also includes allegations of race and sex discrimination, since those would go to the local Human Rights Commission, whereas if you just have solely a complaint of the traditional forms of discrimination, that goes to the state Human Rights Commission. And the reason why, uh, I think the mayor is correct in stating that, you know, the furnishing of the state Human Rights Commission of a complaint even where it involves sexual orientation and, uh, and gender identity complaints, the reason why those are provided to the state Human Rights Commission is, A, that's what the fairness, fair housing ordinance said with respect to any complaints that were filed, and B, uh, I would think that the state's, state Human Rights Commission would want to know if that type of discriminatory conduct was alleged to have occurred, just so they can kind of monitor it.
So they can decide if they want to state...
So if they want to try and...
Action later on.
That's right. So not, they couldn't take action against the...
They're building a database.
Correct, correct.
Well, that would give me more of a reason to be against it, to, to be frank, and I understand just what Mr. Moore is saying, and this isn't something that the end-all or be-all, but what we're, what we're saying is, is that if you remember, the, the House and the Sen, the House and the Senate overrode Governor Beshear's veto over the Religious Restoration Act by a huge margin, we're a long way from having the state Human Rights Commission deal with this issue, if ever. So if that's, because it had to come about, I think, I think the legislature would defeat it, so I just don't see a need for it, but if, but if, but if, Mr. Moore's point, which makes some sense to me, which is, let's say they've got several others and this one, what do you do in that case as far as forwarding it or not? I understand that.
And, you know, if you have the same rule for all complaints, then it's much easier to comply than if you have said, if you have one rule for, you know, in terms of reporting requirement.
Well, and I guess for somebody that's opposed to this, you know, anything that, it sounds like this is a way to influence the state Human Rights Commission to, to move toward that, but I'll, I withdraw the motion.
Except Commissioner Roach, remember that we're only going to have one every, one or 10 years.
Well, I think after all of this, it might be a little more numerous, but...
But I mean, if they are actually keeping a databank, it could actually go the other way, that they don't see a need, so you don't really know what it's going to tell them.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm just like...
I understand. And then I guess my, I'm done, but, and I would ask that, or done with these things that I had, and I think Commissioner Hadden is next in line, but I would ask that we go ahead and determine whether it's one or two.
You asked that for a while back.
Which is what Commissioner Hadden, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Roach. Commissioner Hadden?
I think we need to go with what Commissioner Roach just asked, which draft we're going with. I want to make a motion to go with draft two.
Second?
Okay. Did I hear Commissioner Bowers make a second?
Second.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Hadden, Commissioner Bowers now in discussion. Commissioner Hadden, do you want to further?
No, I'd like to call roll.
All right.
And then move forward with just the draft number two versus even looking at draft one, if there's support.
I would like to end just some discussion real quick. I think under section ninety-six eleven, sorry, ninety-six eleven, under subsection B, I'm not sure based on, and I've bounced around this and talked to some, some folks that made me think, if the current statute, four forty-six, three fifty, which was passed in the last session of the General Assembly, regular session, if that were to be challenged in court and struck down or held not to be constitutional, which would be the same as striking it down, which I don't, I don't know if it will be or not, then if we have subsection B, I'm not sure if that is going to cause a problem with our local ordinance, if changes are made to four forty-six, three fifty in terms of any type of legal challenge. Go ahead, Commissioner Roach.
Well, I guess, Mayor, I guess the question is, where are we governed by? Are we governed by laws of the General Assembly, or are we not governed by laws of the General Assembly? And you could say that for any, any item in the General Assembly, that it could be judged unconstitutionally, so I just don't think, you know, I don't think that makes sense.
Okay, let me, let me clarify. What I was, what I was trying to reference, you're, you're correct, we are governed by the actions of the General Assembly. What I was trying to say is, if, if we're already governed by those actions under four forty-six, three fifty, why is subsection B even needed, other than it could possibly, I don't want to use the term, get our ordinance, but could cause problems and allow people to, which talks especially specifies individuals, then my concern with that would be someone can say, well, I'm starting a new religion or a new church. Or anything, I mean...
You're, you're correct, but I guess the, the point is, is this going to be litigated? Yes. This ordinance will be litigated. It may be litigated under terms of this General Assembly law that you cited, it may be litigated under the exemption, but we're, we're getting ready to vote on an ordinance that is in many ways contrary to a General Assembly law, and I haven't heard a peep about that, except, except, and I've talked more than I needed to. So, you know, it's, it's one, it's six of one half dozen or another. I think it is going to be litigated. I don't know how it's going to come down, but I still think, I'd still think for individuals who are governed under this General Assembly law that they should be able to keep that, and then I also think that for religious entities to have as strong as a section as possible, I think is important, but if we don't think it's important and you all want to vote to strike it, I'll vote no, and we'll just go on.
No, and I, and I agree with what you said in terms of religious organizations. We certainly, I think we all want to exempt, exempt those. I just had questions about the, this is the new language that was added after the meeting, and I have been thinking about it, trying to figure out if there's anything in that language that could be interpreted...
There is.
And you're right.
There is.
To get our ordinance.
There is.
To undo what we're trying to do.
There is.
That was my concern.
Well, that's the way it was written. It was designed to do that.
But you're talking...
Subsection B.
If I may, I think, Commissioner Roach, you're talking about ninety-six eleven.
Yeah, we're on TV from today. Yes, sir.
Right, and the mayor's talking about B, and, and I think, Mayor, by separating those two, first of all, sexual orientation and gender identity do not enjoy the same level of protection on the state or the federal level as the rest of the traditional types of discrimination, age, sex, race, et cetera. So, uh, that's one point. The second is by limiting B to sexual orientation and gender identity, I, I think you've, you have protected B and from constitutional challenge, really.
When you said protected B...
The provisions in ninety-six eleven B.
My, my question was, I just want to be sure that there's not a way to interpret that as to get the intent of this ordinance, that, I'm not saying it is, but my question is, I, the more I thought about it and read it, the more concerned I had, and it, and it may not be a reason to be concerned. That's what I'm just asking, instead of saying, hey, I, I don't know the answer. I'm a little uneasy with it.
Well, it does definitely exempt religious institutions from the...
That part I don't have a problem with.
Sexual orientation and gender identity, but...
That's not the problem. We're at...
The individual part, Mayor, is in A, and there's nothing we can do about A because that's state law.
Just raising as a question. Trying to re, uh, where it's, if you look on the back page, just, if you just read it in its entirety. And it may be okay, I'm just, I'm just saying that I started, I was more okay at first than the more I started reading it and thinking, maybe I overthought it, sometimes we can do that.
Yes, we can, Mayor, and it confuses us. But we got some feedback this week that not everybody that would be exempt from this, in other words, the ministers aren't even in favor of all these exemptions, so we've got, you know, I'm afraid the next little bit's going to be, I don't want to say religious war, but, you know, a conflict within those religious entities over this.
I just want to make sure that we have it drafted, that we don't open the loophole. That was, that was my question, ma'am. Commissioner Haynes?
And actually, I can understand your question because you look at the last part of that, especially when you talk about receives majority of his annual funding from federal, state, local, or any combination there. Only they keep, whoever the religious entity is, is the one to keep their books, so I could see that being a question, you know, we, we have it in here, but, you know, we don't have any way of really substantiating what that funds off.
That's correct, and, but that is a safeguard for the position for somebody that's in favor of broadening this as, as far as possible, because if you take that language out, then entities that got eighty percent but was a religious purpose, they, they wouldn't be, they would have the exemption, so I think Mr. Moore has added that to, um, give it a broader purpose or broader thrust of the ordinance toward these entities, and I think this language is right out of Lexington's ordinance.
Does that be?
Yes, sir. Or it's pretty close.
I think, just to move forward, we should just, and if, if you can research, I, I, and I appreciate, I just, the more you start reading, the more you start thinking, and again, if you're all ready to move on, I'm just asking a question, that's all. Any discussion? If not, do you want to have the first reading?
Commissioner Hadden's not through with her own...
Come on, ask me.
We still haven't decided the one or two, have we?
We're still waiting on, voting on this, Commissioner Hadden.
That's right, we're on discussion of your motion.
Just trying to decide which one we're going to do, and then if there still needs to be amendments, we can make amendments, but let's just decide which one we're going to do, Mayor.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so I'm making a motion.
That's what I'm asking, if you're ready for the reading.
This is not the reading, this is the motion to decide whether to use the version with the local Human Rights Commission versus...
Which I consider to be your, a reading, but, but we'll call. Go ahead and make your, if you may, sending out their statements, if not, we'll go ahead and vote whether or not we're going to go with ordinance number two. And then, your reading, is what I'm trying to say. Thanks for the clarification. I don't think...
Your honor, I do have one, if we're going to go with two, I have one correction I need to, to make.
Okay.
Well, there's more that I would like to bring up, too.
Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Roach?
No.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hadden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes. Okay, now, do you want to have, you have a correction?
If I may, if you look at ninety-six point nine-nine... The last line in my, in my version one...
What, or what section I remember?
This is ninety-six point nine-nine, the penalty, so it's the second last page.
But under subsection B or A?
Under A, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's wrong, sorry, under A.
The last line of A, it still contains the language, or imprisoned for more than one year or both. I had stricken that from version one, but I want...
Yes, that was one of the ones I had.
I had that, yeah.
So, so that was a mistake on my part, but I think someone needs to make a motion to correct that.
So anybody want to make a motion to correct that?
And we also struck it in ninety-six point one-nine C, correct, or not?
Yes, we did. It was.
So ninety-six point one-nine C and ninety-six point nine-nine A.
You can just make a conforming amendment.
We are going to put a period after the $500.
Do you want to say...
That's not for good motion, is it?
I'm not for it, but if you want to make a motion to conform the language to ninety-six point nineteen C, or, that's the simple way to do it.
I move that we have the language in ninety-six point nine-nine A regarding the $500 fund. And that's not good. I move that we have the language in ninety-six point nine-nine A consistent with the language in ninety-six point one-nine C where we punctuate the punishments after $500. Is that an okay motion?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Roach. I'm not going too fast. Move by Commissioner Bowers, I was thinking, Commissioner Roach.
I changed, I changed gender identities, Mayor.
Well, I couldn't tell the difference. All right. So this is a conforming amendment. Any discussion? No, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hadden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Well, I'm going to vote no because I'm not for the original change anyway. All right, that is conformed to, in terms of language, now, I will ask the city solicitor, if we are, we, have needs to make anything else, anything else before we do it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hadden.
Thank you. Under employer, on the first, on the second page...
Ninety-six oh-two?
It's just, just a word, that's all, preceding calendar year, and, and agent or any agent.
Any. Oh, well...
And is more specific.
I think it's and, but I don't, I think it's, I don't think it makes a difference really because whether it's, if you say any or and, it's still an agent.
Okay. Uh, under family, reading that it includes a single individual, spouse, and children, whether related by blood, adoption, or marriage, I would just like to add legal custody and or care after adoption. So it would read includes a single individual, spouse, and children, whether related by blood, adoption, legal custody and or care... blood, adoption, legal custody and/or care, or marriage.
So, that would include a guardianship situation, something like that?
Yes.
Well, you said legal custody.
And/or care.
Care?
And/or care.
Well, but could you not be caring for a child and not really, if you don't have custody?
You may have legal care without full custody.
Well, is that like in a case of a guardian ad litem?
Well, it'd be more a guardian.
Foster.
It would be guardian, could be a, perhaps a guardian ad litem, could be a temporary custody ordered by the Domestic Relations Court. That would make sense to add that in there. Could you read that again?
Yes.
Commissioner Hadden?
May I read it as a motion?
You sure may.
I would like to make a motion that under family, it is defined as includes a single individual, spouse, comma, and children, comma, whether related by blood, comma, adoption, comma, legal custody and/or care, comma, or marriage, period.
I hope there's no second that dies.
All right. Well, wait, wait, no, I'm thinking, I was just waiting for somebody else to second it. I don't have a problem with that.
You can redo it again, because I just said it didn't pass, but you can redo it, if you want to do it.
All right. Third time's a charm, maybe.
Want to redo it?
All right.
Okay.
I will reinstate a motion to define family as includes a single individual, comma...
Yeah, I think you can re, I'll let you restate. I can't let you do the same motion, this is a guy defeated, unless you were on the prevailing side, so you were not on the prevailing side, but I will let you restate it in a different way. Or, I have to be technical, I'm sorry.
Just take out the word care.
I just ruled it out.
Why don't you make the motion?
The only way to do it, I'm sorry, what you do...
Someone else needs to do it.
Somebody else needs to do it, or you can make a motion to reconsider, then you have to be, would have voted on the prevailing side, and I'm looking at either L O C cohort, from, who used to be a statute advisor.
Actually, there is no, but we didn't vote.
We did.
I move that we reconsider the motion.
He cut you off.
Okay, it's moved to reconsider. Uh, by Commissioner Bowers, she voted on the prevailing side, so the motion is, this is to reconsider. All those in favor, second by the saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, those opposed, like I said, okay. This motion is back in front of us to add...
I'll second it.
I know, we just did a procedural thing.
I got it.
Okay. So, do you have the language, the original?
No, I don't.
Okay.
But he does.
We did.
Do I state it?
Uh, amend the definition of family, so it says includes a single individual, comma, spouse, comma, and children, comma, whether related by blood, comma, adoption, comma, legal custody and/or care, comma, or marriage, period.
Does everyone understand it? Okay. Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Roach?
No.
Commissioner Haines?
No.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hadden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
No. Commissioner Hadden?
Uh-huh, thank you. We got the H stuff put in, under 96.8, 96.08 unlawful practices in connection with public accommodations. I'm asking for B to be totally scraped out and just have C start out as B.
So, you're striking all such, subsection B?
Yes.
Are you making that from a motion?
I will make it a motion to strike out all of B under 96.08, and resuming C to start out as B.
Can I ask a question?
Let me get, we have to do it second or let it die.
You had a second, we can ask a question.
Either way.
I second it.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Bowers, Commissioner Roach, go ahead.
Commissioner Hadden, is that, is that, striking that design to, um... Make sure we didn't, didn't have anything that might interfere with freedom of speech and press and that kind of thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Thank you.
I have a question, if Commissioner Hadden will give you a question.
Mm-hmm.
Tell me again what the intent of this is, I apologize.
It's just to protect the freedom of speech, sir.
I'm not sure that I really understand what part is objectionable, but...
Mayor?
Commissioner, Bowers, you have a question for Commissioner Hadden?
It's not really a question, I know why she is wanting to do this.
Commissioner, do you mind if Commissioner Bowers?
Not at all.
Commissioner Bowers? Go ahead, Commissioner Bowers.
Somewhere in here, we talk, I mean, I understand why you want to do it, I agree with you, but somewhere in here, we talk about intimidation, and, um...
96.19.
Thank you. Well, I was just, um... Mr. Solicitor, is there a... If we strike B, is that in any way affected, or, or 96 point? Is there a problem with that? Is there a problem with doing away with B related to, like the enforcement? Well, intimidation often occurs verbally, orally, do you know?
Should just be a look.
No worries.
They're, they address different things, so if you delete B, it would not really impact 96.19C.
You know, I'm just not sure what this does, actually, to the whole, or why we're doing it.
We're doing it to protect freedom of speech. We're not doing it, we're, it's being thought about in relation to freedom of speech.
Yes.
My whole point is intimidation often occurs through speech, and we've got that section on intimidation, but you said that they're, they don't affect one another. Is that correct, Mr. Solicitor?
Well, 96.08B is to stop someone from having an advertisement in the, from sending out a publication that says, here's what I'm gonna do. That would violate the ordinance. 96.19C really protects the person that would receive the publication.
Okay.
So, there's that, you know, they kind of...
There was another section in here that we just talked about, um... I can't remember where it was. It had to do with about to do the violation, about to. Could this not be connected with that?
Uh, that was where, 96.14A, where someone is alleged to have committed, or alleged to have thought about committing the less discriminatory practice, then, and thought is not the right term, but any, in any event, they would receive a copy of the complaint. So, I don't think it's a bad thing for someone to receive a copy of the complaint that's been made against them, then that enables them to respond to the complaint. No, it...
I guess what I'm saying is, if we do this, is it gonna create a bunch of inconsistencies inside of this ordinance? But I know I agree with the reason that you want to do it.
I just have a question.
Commissioner Hadden, you're about to, Commissioner, you yield to Commissioner Haines.
Okay, I'm trying to see where, I understand the protection of freedom of speech, and I see that under all and visual communication. Everything else I don't see under, I'm trying to see whether protection of speech, but taking that whole thing out, though.
Well, my interpretation is that it doesn't impinge anything else upon this ordinance, and the only thing it impinges is the ability to take away anyone's right to free speech. Free speech goes through publication, verbal, however way you want to take it, with the mail. And all I'm asking is to make a motion that that be scratched.
Okay, you're gonna make a motion? Okay, seconded. Motion by Commissioner Hadden, seconded by Commissioner Bowers.
Seconded about five or 10 minutes ago.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought she was, okay.
If I don't extend, it cannot pass, what it comes down to...
Yeah, because you surely may, but, um... If you pass, your vote will be kind of a majority.
Yes, I would expect it to.
But you could, you can vote present, which would not count, I know it sounds weird, but you can vote present if you choose to do so. Am I right, Commissioner, I mean, Solicitor?
I think that if you vote present or abstain, it's the same thing.
It's gonna be the same. Okay. My question is, under hate crime status... How this would apply to federal... Or public law, well, federal law is public law, of course. I'm not sure.
It doesn't matter, federal law would govern.
That's what I meant, I mean, under, I'm sorry, under like hate crime statutes, persons, this is, I'm not sure about this one. Taking that out with the, I'm reluctant to take it out, but I don't know that, only because I haven't had time to really read it in the full context. Any other discussion?
Call roll.
Well, yeah.
And just a quick clarification for, for everybody that's out there. If y'all notice, we're a little lost on a few things. We didn't, we didn't get the ordinances till Friday at quarter five, and, and they're long, and I'm sure everybody else up here, I spent half the day looking at this, and never really did get to study the ordinance two as much as I would like to, so I understand what the mayor said, and it's, we tried to turn this around pretty quick, because we just met on it Monday.
I guess my concern, what I'm concerned about is just taking that one section out.
Well, Mayor?
How it affects anything, if at all. Commissioner Bowers?
Mr. Solicitor, Mayor, whoever, if we left it here, could it not be struck down? Because it does violate freedom of speech, so could the whole ordinance be struck down?
I can't tell you whether or not a quarter would...
Okay, we'll just call for the question.
Okay, two people have called for the question. Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Roach?
And a yes vote would be to get rid of it, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Commissioner Haines?
Present.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hadden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
I'm just voting no, because I'm not really sure how in context it is gonna affect anything, um, this is passed, so that section, sub B of 9608 is stricken, struck? Commissioner Hadden, do you have?
I do, um, yeah, I'll read just real quick, um, as we all know, there's a lot of words. I would just like to note that 96.10, I'm not a big fan of number four, I'm just gonna state that, but it's there.
96.10?
I don't need to have any discussion on it.
Okay.
But I'm not a fan. And under 96.14, under enforcement... I work in healthcare, so my idea of most people's workplace is a little different. I work under HIPAA, where I don't discuss anything, I have patient-client confidentiality in everything that I do. So, in your all's world of work, it doesn't make sense to me, because in my world, I just can't talk about it, um, who I see and what they have, unless the patient wants to discuss it, or the patient fills out forms for it to be discussed and be brought forth to be, become public knowledge. So, I get a little stuck sometimes in regard to this, and, um... One speaker did speak about the Freedom of Information Act, and I just want to question that, Mr. Solicitor, does that...
You're talking about the language that says nothing said or done in the course of informal endeavors may be made public or used as evidence in a subsequent proceeding under this chapter...
Yes, sir.
...without the written consent of the persons concerned, and any employee of the city who shall make public any information violation of this provision without authorization...
Yes, sir.
...shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor.
Yes, sir.
Point out, Freedom of Information Act doesn't apply, this would be Kentucky Open Records.
And...
Act, that would...
Right, in the Kentucky Open Records, this, this would be preliminary information, which would not be subject to the Open Records Act.
Okay.
It would not be releasable. And also, I'd point out that if anyone's been involved in a mediation of a court proceeding or administrative proceeding, things that are said within a mediation are kept confidential, and all the parties actually sign agreements to maintain that confidentiality, and the reason why you do that is so people can be open and forthcoming in a mediation or attempt to, uh...
Get as much truth.
Resolve a dispute through conciliation, and you don't want people to be penalized for being open and forthcoming when it might help you to resolve the dispute.
Understood. Is there a loophole when it comes to a whistleblower, to the effect? Would a whistleblower constitute anything different? Just a random question.
Well, there's a whole act on that.
If, if it...
If a company with, has a whistleblower policy within their large organization, is there a loophole?
That provision applies to city employees.
Okay. Thank you. The other, the typo that I found was in 96.19, prevention of intimidation. Under B, it says any person, because he or she is or has been. Under C, it just says he is, and I didn't know if that needed to be more uniform. It's...
Under C?
Under, well, under B, it says he or she, but under C, it only says he, and I didn't know if that needed to be more uniform.
And under A, it has he is.
Yeah.
And under about 14, yeah. It's all through the document.
We need his or hers and he or she everywhere.
We can, we can change this, the General Assembly's in the process of trying to make all their language gender neutralist, too, but...
It was just, that's all.
We could do it now, if you want, or go back and change all city ordinances over time. I know they all looked, they just certainly looked over, it's more difficult than people think when we make those changes, but... Commissioner Hadden?
That's all I have.
Commissioner Haines? Thank you, Commissioner Hadden.
Thank you.
I just want a clarification on the enforcement, the 9614A, says shall be fined not more than $1,000 or imprisoned not more than one year. Is that one different because it's under the housing thing, or did we change that?
That's, that's, that was different just because that's not actually a violation of, of the... of, of the discrimination provisions of this ordinance. That's where you have a city employee who, without authorization, releases confidential information. Now, if you want to make that a $500 fine, that would be fine. I mean, that would be okay, pardon the fine, but...
I would just rather things be consistent so that it doesn't change year to year. And I thought we did it that way because we had to. Otherwise, I'd rather... If the motion's in order, I'd like the motion that it be the same consistency as well.
And a second to...
So it'd be $500, period.
Okay. Commissioner Haynes made the motion. Commissioner Bowers, did you second?
I did.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? You know, the thing I'll point out, if someone files a complaint and it's filed and it's found to be not a valid complaint, I think that's pretty much what this is trying to prevent from being discussed publicly. So you have to think about, about that. If someone is alleged to have committed any type of discriminatory act, somebody could just make up an allegation, bring it forward. It can be moved on or not. And if it's not, someone can say, oh, I heard that so-and-so had a violation of discrimination, violation charged against them, but doesn't go anywhere. They're found to completely be not guilty or to not be in violation would be more the term. Would you want a city employee to make that public? That's just a question. And if you don't, if it's, if it's not a concern, that's okay. But that's why that's different.
Go on in public.
Exactly. And so that's why that was worded to prevent any employee of saying something, well, so-and-so was charged with a complaint but found to be not in violation. You just put that person's name out in the public. And I think that's probably the intent of that. Would I want to add anything?
I do want to add one thing though, because if a person's a first-time offender, you're going to have some imposed enforcement. And if they're a fifth time, I'm sure it would be something different. It's not going to stay here. And I think that's why we said up to 500 in the early wording because everybody just picked up the $500 and saying where it's going to come. Right, but it's up to, so there are some stages there. And I just didn't want us to get, put ourselves in a corner if we don't have to at this point.
Okay. Any other discussion? Nadia, ready for the question? Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
I will vote yes for this because it's not going to matter. I mean, hopefully it's not going to come up. We don't have this, we'll put, place it if employees violate any kind of confidentiality agreement. We have other ways to deal with that, so...
I have one last thing I found, Mayor.
Okay.
And that is under, I'm sorry, Commissioner Haynes, were you finished?
Yes.
Was in our book here, under background, under 4.2. It still states that there's 11 member City Frankfurt Human Rights Commission to be created per what we've read. Seven, I just want to make sure that the background meets what it stated.
Oh, the, okay.
The abstract?
The abstract.
I didn't have the ordinance to re-draft the...
I understand, I understand.
And that doesn't affect whether or not we do a reading or not. That's just, that'll be changed for the, for the next meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted, just clarification, that's all.
And also the summary at the end of this, 96, of this draft number two will also have to be changed to reflect the amendments that we've made tonight. So you can go ahead and pretty much scrap the, the summary as it is, which again, has no effect on the ordinance. Okay, anyone else? Ready for a first reading?
I'm sorry, Commissioner. So, Mr. Moore? The level of changes we have made with ordinance two with the Human Rights Commission are not to the extent to where you could not have a first reading. Is that correct?
We can have a first read because you have made amendments to the...
As we've gone along.
As we've gone through it. And I actually can read it by title and summary because the summary is somewhat general and did not...
Change that much.
Right, change. Because it was not as specific as we then. So if you'd like me to read it by title and summary?
If there's no objections, please read it by title and summary.
By title, an ordinance amending chapter 96, fair housing, sections 96.01, 96.02, 96.03, 96.04, 96.05, 96.06, 96.07, 96.08, 96.09, 96.10, 96.11, 96.12, 96.13, 96.14, 96.15, 96.16, 96.17, 96.18, 96.19, and 96.99 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. By summary, this ordinance amends chapter 96 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. The fair housing ordinance was amended to prohibit discrimination against individuals on the basis of gender identity and sexual orientation and age, to prohibit discrimination in employment and public accommodation, to exempt religious institutions from the provisions of the ordinance regarding gender identity and sexual orientation. Section 96.11 contains the reference to KRS 46, or excuse me, 446.350 protecting a person's exercise of his/her religious rights. The mayor or fairness officer may resolve statements filed alleging discriminatory treatment under this chapter. Formal complaints alleging discrimination on the basis of other than gender, identity, or sexual orientation may be filed with the State Human Rights Commission for enforcement. Formal complaints alleging discrimination on the basis of gender, identity, or sexual orientation, which include additional allegations of discrimination, may be filed with the local Human Rights Commission for enforcement. A seven-member City of Frankfurt Human Rights Commission is created with the power to determine violations of the fairness ordinance. A hearing officer would conduct any formal hearings and issue findings of fact, conclusions of law, and a recommended order. The Human Rights Commission would then accept the recommended order or revise it as deemed necessary. There is no automatic right of appeal from the decision of the Human Rights Commission. Individuals that are the subject of illegal, of illegal discrimination may file a complaint directly with the Franklin Circuit or District Court, and the penalty section is set forth in section 96.99.
First reading, now item 4.3.
4.3. By title, an ordinance to amend the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ordinances, chapter 150.05, by amending the City of Frankfurt's Property Maintenance Code, section 302, exterior property areas subsections 302.9, storage of trailers. This ordinance amends the city's property maintenance code by amending subsection 302.9, storage of trailers, to allow trailers parked on the grass within side and rear yards on residential property and in the front yard setback areas if on a paved surface.
I move adoption.
Was this a first reading?
I wrote first read.
But that's...
I encourage you all to vote yes. It's okay. Because I remember when we had a big battle over this about what, Mayor, six or eight years ago?
That's all right. There's nothing wrong with that. Resolutions, we have a couple resolutions authorizing the mayor to make application for an inter-internal Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for 2013 Kentucky Homeland Security application to execute a document which is deemed necessary by the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to facilitate administrative grant funds for advanced life support equipment and firefighting equipment and to act as the authorized correspondent for this project. If there's no questions asked, that we adopt the resolution if obligated.
Are those documents that you were authorizing, you just signed attached?
They are not.
Because the minutes of the last meeting said that they will be attached.
Is the...
Maybe there are no documents yet. Here's, like, Chief wants to talk to...
Chief Posich.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Next item is 6.2, resolution adopting an interlocal agreement between the City of Frankfurt and Woodford County, this report concerning sanitary sewer services.
Uh, Mayor? We didn't vote on that.
Sorry? Go back to 6.1.
I mean, we adopt that resolution.
Moved by Commissioner Bowers, seconded by Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion? CNN, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes. 6.1 is approved. No, 6.2, sorry, I get a little ahead of myself. This is a resolution that I just read, and this would be for sanitary sewers near the eastern boundary of Franklin County adjacent to US 60. We've already been providing sanitary sewer, sewer service to these residents and buildings for a number of years, and they are required to pay for this service at the published rates. Any questions? We have our director here. Any questions? Commissioner Hayden.
What, fiscally, what do we, what do we get out of this? Besides the fact that we look good working with another county?
Well, we'll get the rates.
If I could respond a bit? I've been working with Bill Scaff on this, Commissioner Hayden. And we, the city has been providing sewer service to these individuals and entities for a number of years. And the Division of Water actually asked us to go ahead and formalize that with this interlocal agreement with Woodford County. So the city, of course, the infrastructure has been in for a number of years, and the city's been receiving payment from these individuals and entities for a number of years. The interlocal agreement just cleans up an issue for the Division of Water.
Are they only residential or is there commercial property too?
I think there's commercial property because I think, I think there's one.
Are we able to collect occupational sales tax on those? Any jobs that are there?
We do from their downtown location. But not from the location in Woodford County.
Any discussion, questions?
I have a quick one, I guess. Bill, do we, do we bring in enough from the revenue to offset our costs for servicing them? Or can we even know that? That's what I figured. Thanks.
I move to approve 6.2, the resolution.
Moved by Commissioner Haynes.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowers. Further discussion? CNN, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden? No? Mayor May?
Yes. 6.2 is adopted, consent orders, all those. And is it possible to have any vote modification forms filed? If not, at the end of the consent calendar, if someone will make a motion to approve the consent calendar items, everyone will be considered to have voted in the affirmative on all the items in the consent calendar and all state file vote modification forms, which there are none. So turn over to the city manager for consent calendar. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. First item, 7.1, excuse me, is a one-year renewal agreement with the Franklin County Health Department to provide city employee health services, including vaccines, screenings, shots, et cetera. Cost is $10,000. Again, this is a renewal. Item 7.2 is a $417,000 amendment, number two, for a contract with GRW to provide contract administration and resident inspection for the wet weather detention facility. Total contract cost is $967,250. Item 7.3 is a $44,000 contract with Franklin Plant Board to provide electric and water service, also for the wet weather detention facility. Item 7.4 is to allow the city to file condemnation proceedings, obtain easements to replace the Fort Food Pump Station on Riley Road for sanitary sewer services. Our negotiations have failed to reach a satisfactory agreement. Item 7.5 is a $5,000 engineering agreement with municipal engineers to provide design and survey services to accommodate a new roundabout at Cardwell Lane and Michael Davenport Boulevard. Our cost, and this is by the Kentucky Transit, Transportation Cabinet, and our costs will be reimbursed by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. Item 7.6 is to authorize an additional $108,000 for contingency engineering services agreement with Stranis Associates. Stranis worked for the city since '06 and '07. They are working on our combined sewer overflow control plan. Item 7.7 is a $24,932 contract amendment with Burgess and Niple to retrofit pump stations with quick connections for generators that are used for, or when we have electric outages. Total contract amount is $49,392. Item 7.8 is a milling and overlay bid award for street resurfacing to HG Mays to resurface portions of Collins Lane, College Park, Sunset Drive, Greenup Avenue, McCurry Avenue, Blue Ridge Drive, and Galbraith Road. Funding will be provided by municipal aid. Item 7.9 is enter into a contract with facility due to provide a utility track account that will track our utility usage in a number of city buildings. There is no cost in the first year. Second cost could be up to $5,900 should the city commission approve. This is part of our energy efforts to, to track our energy improvements in various buildings. Item 7.1 is the application to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority for state revolving loan fund, approximately, to the loan fund for approximately $4.9 million for two sewer interceptor lines that are 27 inches to 48 inches in size. We're estimating our interest rate to be about 1.7% and a 20-year term. I'm sorry, that was 7.10. Item 7.11 is not to exceed $8,000 agreement with Ken Byrnes Incorporated for assistance with the sanitary sewer lab certification. He'll help us with standard operating procedures, quality assurance plan, and record-keeping procedures. Item 7.12 is a $10,000 application for an urban and community forestry grant to update the city's tree inventory and to develop a master plan. There is a $10,000 match which is covered in two different parts of the city park budget. Item 7.13 is to enter into a black, backflow valve agreement with residents of Petticoat, number one, Petticoat Lane. Consistent with the city's installation program, the units prevent sewer backup into a building. The resident is required to obtain three bids, and the city will reimburse the cost of the low bid. Item 7.14 is to execute a release of lien for 10 property maintenance code violations that are rendered invalid due to foreclosures and untimely filings. Item 7.15, this would cover the retirement of fire chief Wallace Posich, effective 7/31/13. The retirement of fire department captain Mark Wood, effective 7/31/13. Retirement of fire sergeant Danny Simons, effective 7/31/13. Retirement of patrol officer William Bell, effective 7/31/13. Retirement of patrol officer Jeffrey Bog, effective 7/31/13. Retirement of police sergeant Gerald Crawford, effective 7/31/13. Retirement of patrol officer Joseph Bonta, 7/31/13. Retirement of patrol officer Byron Redman, also 7/31/13. We have several promotions to consider. Promotion of Sean Caldwell, effective 8/1/13, from fire lieutenant to fire captain. Promotion of Kenny Barnett, effective 8/1/13, from fire sergeant to fire lieutenant. Promotion of Richard Gilkison, effective 8/1/13, from firefighter three to firefighter, or to fire sergeant. Promotion of Eric Simpson, effective 8/1/13, from firefighter three to fire sergeant. Promotion of Chris Choir in the Police Department from patrol officer three to patrol, or to police sergeant, effective 8/1/13. Two appointments, we have an appointment of Gina Hartley in the Finance Department. Two appointments, we have an appointment of Gina Hartley in the Finance Department. She will be an Accounting Specialist One effective 8/1/13, and we have an appointment subject to contingent drug screen and background check for HR Director Kathy Fields effective 7/30/13. Please, please my report, Mayor.
Your motion to adopt the consent orders.
I make a motion.
You got it?
I got two at the same time. Who was first?
I defer to Commissioner Haddon.
Commissioner Haddon, second by Commissioner Roach. That's okay.
It's perfect.
All right. The consent calendar is adopted. Next, we have board appointments. I'd like to reappoint Barry Holder Jr. for a term ending 7/1/17 to the Board of Attorney Adjustments. Mr. Holder's resume was provided in advance, and it's a reappointment.
I move we accept your recommendation.
Moved by Commissioner Bowers. Seconded by Commissioner Haines. In discussion, CNN.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Roach.
How many terms has Barry been on there?
Do we know?
Off the top, I don't know.
Because I looked at the resume, and that's just my standard question, which whoever's appointed to whatever, we, we want to make sure that we include it up. And I'm, I'm going to vote for this. I guess my question is, in the future, whenever we get anything, I just want to know how, in other words, if somebody's been on there four terms, well, I think it's time for somebody else in the community to get a chance. So, that would just be something I would like whenever we get the resumes, just how long have they, how many terms have they served? And I couldn't find it.
Should we, we should have that information.
We have that. I just don't know without knowing.
Don't go.
All right. Any other discussion? Now, clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hady?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes. Thank you all very much, and also thank Mr. Holder for his service. A new business under the pilot...
Mayor, I had a piece of old business.
Go ahead.
In our last meeting in here, we had, or had requested, and nobody objected, that the city manager was going to work with the city solicitor into looking at how we're going to see those documents that we authorize you to sign to ensure that we don't change policy accidentally, incidentally. And I think our city manager and solicitor are going to work on some process to assure that we never end up with something like we had in January where it had the potential. So, I would just like to be updated on what's happened with that. I ask that the last work session had not been done yet. Chief Posic just told us that we will be getting a list of documents on the thing we just approved tonight. So, I guess my question is, is that list going to appear? I had recommended that it appear on the consent agenda, but I don't know. Have you all looked at that? Is that something possible? Or is that just going to be too weird because they come in at too many different weird times, or what?
Do you want to answer that, city manager?
They do come in at different times, but we have yet to really sit down and talk about a process. Rob and I have met several times about other issues.
Okay.
But we'll put that on our list of things.
Okay.
If I can have a report.
Mayor, I don't want you to be like responsible for, not that I don't trust you, but I would not want to be responsible for signing any and every document that comes in after the board's approved it. If that document actually does have the potential to change policy, it's not, there needs to be a process whereby this commission can look at something that might be like what we've looked at in January.
I agree. Our internal policy has been for all documents to go through the city clerk, so the city clerk can review, and she always...
Well, this is the second time that, I asked about it in the work session. It hadn't been done. I asked about it last time in here. It hadn't been done, so I would just encourage somebody to look at it and get back to me.
My apologies.
So that we had, so I know what the process is, and maybe the process is nothing more than there's going to be one person, like this solicitor, that determines...
They do.
That, that's okay, but I mean...
Well, I think, I think the current policy has been the city clerk accepts documents for signature by the mayor, and the city attorney reviews those. And I see on the form where before they're put, supposed to work this way, and it has, to my knowledge, the city clerk puts everything in a folder that's been reviewed by the city clerk and the city attorney.
And what happens is, if there's anything where she, where the city clerk has a question, then she brings that to my attention, but if it's just normal, a normal document, I don't see that.
And I might, I might not flag it as significant because it's routine grant documents.
Whereas it might be significant.
And it could be, so I don't know.
Maybe there's no better way to do it, but I would like to, to at least look at it and see if there is a way. So, that list that's going to come to us...
The person that's going to have the most, you know, usually where it's going to happen is going to be a grant, and the person that has the most knowledge about the grant is Rebecca. So, she should be the one that flags a document for review that may be inconsistent from what was approved by the commission and that would change policy. Because when I read one of those grant documents with all candor, you know, those things are 45 pages long, and if you all want me to review those documents, I can, but we'll have to make some additional arrangements in order to do that.
Were you considering, you can meet with Rebecca one week.
You have to see the bond documents that we signed.
Yeah. I read ours at the school.
Okay, well, I think the city manager said he and the staff will be working on it. Does that significantly answer your question?
Sure.
Okay, any other old business? Commissioner Roach, do you have some?
Just, Ms. Moore, what's the, it may be too soon. What's the status on the appraisals on the Leonard Wood property?
Uh, city manager and I are meeting on that...
Within the next couple of days.
Within the next couple of days because we got the appraisals back.
That's what I wanted to know.
And we're going to come up with the schedule for the soliciting sealed bids for the purchase of those properties.
So, at what point in time would we see the appraisals?
Y'all want to see it now, Kim?
I can put them in your packets by Friday.
That'd be fine. I'd just assume not see it tonight, but if we could look at that, I appreciate that. I would, I would ask that on the August work session, that discussion of additional properties identified by staff for possible sale be placed on the August work session.
If there's no objection, so are we.
No objection.
I would also ask that, if possible, if the discussion of industrial park number three be placed on the work session and see if we can have Kim Smith come and present.
Sure.
And I would also ask on the work session, and I would also ask Commissioner Haddon to help me on this because she and I have been talking about this, is when we talked at the last work session, we talked about ways to utilize current city policy and add perhaps to that policy to strengthen local businesses, and, and so I'd like a wide-ranging discussion of that, and I think Commissioner Haddon had a piece to that as well, or maybe several pieces.
Just, just one piece, which would be adding a list of the licensed businesses. So, if I needed a carpenter, I could have a list provided me from the city saying, these are licensed staff. It's in alphabetical order. We don't specifically recommend one or the other or not, but they're licensed in our city. They pay their taxes, and this is who we have. Or if you need an electrician, or if you need a plumber, it's kind of a go-to sheet, almost like a Yellow Pages that have businesses within our city.
And just to, thanks, Commissioner Haddon, and just to, just to kind of give you a sense of, of what maybe we're not doing in this area, there is a policy, and there, and you're supposed to sign up if you want to get those extra points, and this was passed, I think, in the late, in 1998. We, well, we've got five people signed up for it that I can see, and so I think this is one of those things that's dormant, and perhaps we can jazz it up and improve it so that we can help grow Frankfurt business.
Any other? All right, under new business, have a question. Since I'm on the Housing Authority Board, do I, I can't remember when I was mayor before, did I recuse myself from voting on their payment and their taxes?
I can't recall, but it's probably a good idea if you do since you are on that board.
So, I'm gonna, I'm pretty sure that I did. I just wanted to ask. Commissioner.
Do we have a piece of kind of old business?
Okay, we go back to old business if there's no objection.
Well, I was just looking, we don't have commissioner comments anymore, correct? So, we had in the last work session decided to put a posting on the website about what to do when people get business, people come into their door, and Chief...
Solicitors?
Yes. Chief, can I, I would rather, like, can you just tell the public? I got an email from a constituent that had brought the issue to me, who did see the posting on the website and said that was good, but not everybody gets, reads the, goes to that website. Could you tell them what you want them to do? I could give them the phone number, but, you know, I would rather you tell them, do you want them to ask for the business license first, or how do you want them to do that?
I'm sorry I was talking back there, so I wouldn't pay any attention.
We posted, I know. I saw you.
Sorry.
I saw you. We put, we had, you all had put on the website the number to call and what to do if people get solicitors at their door.
Door solicitors.
Yes, and so a constituent said that she did see that, and could we please do other things to make the public aware? So, I said that I would either tell people on television tonight or ask you to do that. It'd be better if you do it. You're the chief, and you know what you'd rather have them do. The number you would like to have them call, I've got to never hear of it.
If any citizen is concerned with door-to-door solicitation, first of all, you know, we just ask that you use some common sense. You don't have to answer your door. Do not let people into your house. If you feel uncomfortable with the person there, close your door, call dispatch at 875-8582, or if it's an emergency, dial 911.
And would you like for them to first ask for the business license?
If, if the resident feels comfortable doing that, people going door-to-door have to register with the city finance department, so they have to have a business license. If the resident would like to ask them to produce one, that would be fine, but I'd like to say, common sense is to be used here. You don't have to put up with rude behavior from, from these folks. Typical door-to-door salesmen have to be pushy. That, that's, that's kind of part of their, part of their thing, but, you know, you don't have to accept rude behavior from folks. If you don't want them on your doorstep, just ask them to leave or...
And I think the most important thing is who to call, so it's 875-8582.
That's, that's the regular dispatch number.
Right.
And if it's an emergency, if, if they feel threatened or something, please dial 911.
And you guys do a really good job because I know the mayor and I called within about five minutes of each other one night when we had people without a license, and you all were there within just a couple of minutes, so...
Right, and, and it's not only just the summertime season, you know, with the door-to-door magazine subscriptions, that type of thing. After storms, you have people going, going around wanting to cut your trees and things like that. So, you know, you should always err on the side of caution and ask for a city business license.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. Okay. Getting back into new business, 10.1 authorizes the waiver of the payment of taxes to the Housing Authority for the 20, year 2012. This amount is approximately $11,808.12. Yes, Commissioner Roach.
I'm not very familiar with this over the long term besides looking at this last year. Is this something that they, is this something just happens every year?
Yes.
Have they ever paid?
Not that I can recall.
Not since 2004. Not since 2000.
Okay. Just ask.
Okay, any others? If not, ready for a motion? And I will recuse myself from this vote, so... I don't need to put a letter.
No.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Moved by Commissioner Haddon.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowers. In discussion, CNN, clerk please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hady?
Yes.
And Mayor May?
I am accusing myself due to potential conflict of interest serving as a member of Frankfurt Housing Authority and also appointing board members to Frankfurt Housing Authority. 10.1 is adopted. Next item is closed session per KO 6181/1/12. Discuss litigation pending litigation.
Mayor May, we go into closed session in accordance with KRS 6120.
810/12.
810.
Sub 1/12.
Yes.
Moved by Commissioner Bowers. Seconded by Commissioner Roach. In discussion, CNN, clerk please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hady?
Yes.
Mayor May?
I am recusing myself due to potential conflict of interest serving as a member of Frankfurt Housing Authority and also appointing board members to Frankfurt Housing Authority. 10.1 is adopted. Next item is closed session per KO 6181/1/12. Discuss litigation pending litigation.
Mayor May, we go into closed session in accordance with KRS 6120.
810/12.
810.
Sub 1/12.
Yes.
Moved by Commissioner Bowers. Seconded by Commissioner Roach. In discussion, CNN, clerk please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hady?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes.